Are not coming. Who is this Russ?
Uh, Nathan.
Suley is not going to be here. Shashani and.
There's.
You can reach your hands up.
No ma'am.
Good evening, everybody. Saw her running a few minutes late. We're not starting the meeting yet. This is simply our public recognition. I'd like to call up Ms. Cosper with Volunteers in Public Schools, please.
A little. Good afternoon. Good afternoon Superintendent Lamont, Cole, President Carlo Powell, that's not with us, and Vice President Patrick Morgan, as well as various board members. I am Kristen Cosper. I'm the Volunteers in Public Schools Volunteer and Community Partners Director. Today, I have the honor of recognizing a partner who has already made a significant impact this school year. VIPS Outstanding Partner in Education this month is El Polo Loco. El Polo Loco demonstrates a strong commitment to our schools while embodying a spirit of collaboration. Their motto, "Good Food," brings us together and connects us to something larger than ourselves, extends beyond their restaurant and into the community. It is exemplified by ensuring that River Oaks students were equipped with the essential tools necessary to start school by gifting the school over $1,500 in donations of school supplies. Plus, during the River Oaks meet and greet, they provided refreshments and meals for parents, students, and teachers. El Polo Loco's support helped make the event not only enjoyable, but also created a welcoming environment, inspiring over 28 parents to sign up to volunteer with River Oaks Parent Teacher Organization this school year. And they're not done. On the first day of school, for First Day of School Helpers with VIPS, El Polo Loco team joined the VIPS helpers at both Twin Oaks Elementary and River Oaks Elementary. The volunteers provided bilingual and logistical support and welcomed students and parents with bright smiles and high energy. To add a special touch, they also offered free churros to every student who was present on the first day of school at both River Oaks and Twin Oaks Elementary. El Polo Loco did not leave anyone out this year. They celebrated our dedicated teachers with custom-made back-to-school tumblers and gift cards for a free lunch this year. This gesture showed their appreciation for the hard work and commitment of our educators. El Polo Loco's commitment to continuing their support throughout the school year is wonderful, and we are excited to see their partnership grow. Tonight, we celebrate El Polo Loco for their financial and material support, as well as their genuine partnership and enthusiasm for EBR schools. Thank you for being a partner in education. Please join me in a round of applause for El Polo Loco, VIPS Outstanding Partner in Education for August.
Thank you.
You're welcome. It's not an Olympic gold, but it's just as important.
Thank you, Ms. Cosper, El Polo Loco, and VIPS. We appreciate all the work that you do for our children very much. Okay. We have four minutes before we can legally start the meeting, so we will sit here and wait for four minutes before we can start the meeting. Thank you. It's not only five o'clock somewhere, it's five o'clock here, folks. That does not mean you can have libations. I call this meeting of these Baton Rouge Parish School Board to order. Madam Secretary, will you please call the roll? My bad, sorry about that. Tonight, the invocation will be led by School Board Member Nathan Rust, and the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Cadet Sergeant Shaher Abdallah of Terra High School, accompanied by Senior Army Instructor, Lieutenant Colonel, retired Rafael Morrison. Mr. Rust?
Please stand and pray with me. Father in heaven, we thank you for this day. We thank you, first of all, for a safe and joyous start to school this year, Lord. And today, we just pray for your blessings on our children, on the families that trust us with their students, to educate them and to help be part of raising this community up and educating them in the things that they need to know to be successful, Lord. So I pray that you will bestow your wisdom upon all the people in this room, the people that work for our school system in educating our children, and that you will continue to protect us through this year. In your name, we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Rust, Colonel Morrison, and Sergeant Abdallah.
Steam board members, Superintendent Cole, it's my honor to introduce Cadet Shaher Abdallah. Now, I'm gonna apologize to that man with the camera, because I told him I was only gonna be up here for about 30 seconds, but it's hot out there, and just like wearing a wool sock, okay? So I'm gonna suck up all this AC I can for as long as I can, before I gotta cross that parking lot. No, but Cadet Shaher Abdallah is a third-year student to JRTC program. He's a junior this year, 3.3 GPA, attends PTech, one of my dual enrollment kids, has been on the drill team, as well as the color guard. He's pursuing an associate's degree in cybersecurity. He wants to continue his education at Texas A&amp;M when he graduates and continue in computer engineering or criminal justice. Additionally, he wants to join the Corps of Cadets at Texas A&amp;M University and commission in the United States Army as a commission officer. So I present to you all Cadet Shaher Abdallah.
Raise your hand over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you both very much. All right, now, Madam Secretary, please call the roll. Oh, well, after they finish giving the medals. I'm used to the committee of the whole. Okay. Am I correct in calling for the roll call now? Thank you.
District three, President Powell Lewis. District nine, Vice President Martin.
Present.
District one, Mr. Blue.
Here.
District two, Mr. Lannis. District four, Ms. Stewart. District five, Mr. Lewis.
Present.
District six, Mr. Russ.
Present.
District seven, Mr. Gode.
Here.
District eight, Ms. Sule. We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. This meeting that we're in right now is a public hearing on the proposal to roll forward the tax millage for the next tax year. This is item B1, discussion to hear public comments on the following: A, adjusted millage rates for the tax year 2024, and B, set forth the adjusted millage rates after reassessment and rolling forward to rates not to exceed the prior year's maximum millage for the tax year 2024. So, Ms. Lopez.
Yes. Good evening, board members and Superintendent Cole. Tonight, we'll be discussing setting the millage rate for the district with the property tax collections. Our current millage rate is 43.45 mils, which was approved by the voters of this parish. Each year, you approve to place us back on the rolls so that we may collect our property taxes. Every four years, the assessor's office provides a reassessment of all the property values in the parish. 2024 was that year. After the reassessment, the millage rate is rolled back to the correct mils based upon the new assessed value. For 2024, the new millage rate would be 41.03 mils. In order to maintain the full voter-approved 43.45, the board must vote to roll the millage forward or to maintain the reduced rate. In September of 2020, the board approved to maintain the adjusted millage rate of 41.25 mils during COVID pandemic and maintain this rate through 2021. In 2022, the board voted to roll forward the millage and return the district to the voter-approved 43.45 mils. At this time, the request again is to roll forward the millage based upon the new assessment to the voter-approved millage of 43.45 mils. Just as an overview, I've always included surrounding parishes, so you can kind of see where EBR falls with the rest of the district local area. So Zachary School System is 67.2 mils, and this is the 2023 assessment. Ascension Parish is 61.59, Central City Schools is 60.08, and Baker City Schools is 43.2. And as stated earlier, EBR is 43.45. As you can see, when the taxes were rolled forward in 2022, there was a $21.2 million increase in property tax collections. Over $9 million of that is inclusive of the roll-forward amount that was approved by the board. Moving the millage forward will increase tax collections for the roll-forward portion only by 12.9 million, or a 6% increase. This makes up 40% of the revenues of the district and provides $1.7 million to our charter schools. This is a renewable and continued source of revenue for the district that assists with ongoing initiatives for our students. So let's talk about the two separate resolutions. Each approval of each of the resolutions must be separate. Resolution one allows us to be on the tax roll of the assessor's office and is required each year to continue to collect property taxes. Resolution two requires 2/3rds vote of the board and will allow us to maintain the 43.45 mils for the current rate in alignment with the approved 2024-2025 budget that was approved by the board. Each resolution must be read into the board minutes in full, and a vote must be taken for each one individually. That's, yes.
Mr. Blue.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez. I know it doesn't say it on here, but when was the millage originally introduced and passed by the voters? Do you know that?
They have, if you read the resolutions in the packet, they're all different years. So the constitutional tax is 5.25 mils. The rest of them are at different times, whenever the board brought them to the public.
Okay, I got you.
So some of them are back in many years ago, and we renewed them. We actually have more there being renewed this year.
And these millage rates, they cover recurring expenses?
Yes, sir.
It's not for one project?
No, sir.
It's for the recurring expenses to cover expenses within the district?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Are there any other board members with questions? Mr. Lewis?
Ms. Lopez, am I correct, then, that will add $12.9 million?
That is $12.9 million that was already approved in the budget. Yes, sir.
Okay, so we're gonna get those monies from?
If you roll forward.
If we roll forward.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Picking up on that point, just to clarify, if we didn't roll forward the millage, then we would have to cut $12.9 million out of the budget that we approved a couple of months ago, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other board members with comments or questions? We will have an opportunity to discuss this again under new business in the actual board meeting momentarily. So now, without further ado, we'll call for public comment on this item. Public comment, oh, Mr. Gode.
Yeah, just a quick thing, because I just want to make sure people understand this is broken down into two parts. One part is the voter-approved millage that we have. If we roll it forward, we're keeping the same millage. If we didn't roll it forward, the taxpayers would see a tax cut. Now, the offset of some of that is that the property value assessments by the assessor has gone up on many properties through inflation and other things. So there are two pieces to this, and so by rolling forward, we're only keeping the original tax rate in place. So this is not a new tax. It is not anything that's bringing in new revenues. The new revenues, any increase from this is because of increased valuation of properties, and we pay the same kind of increases that we have to pay. Our things, we're trying to do teacher salary adjustments and all these kinds of things. So I don't want this to get lost as if it's a tax increase. The only increases people will see is if their valuation goes up. If their valuation hasn't gone up, they will see no change.
That is 100% correct.
So I just wanted to make sure everyone understood that distinction.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the board before we turn it over to comments from the public on this item? This is a public hearing for this matter, and now's your chance to speak. Are there any public comments? Madam Secretary, do you have any cards previously? All right, come on up. All right, Ms. Nynan?
Good evening. Tanya and I am in District seven. I'm actually a little confused about the process. Does this mean I'll have two other opportunities to speak in support of the roll forward because we have this three minutes, and then we have two resolutions during the regular meeting? Can anybody just surreptitiously nod to me, even though you're not?
Yes, no, that's correct.
All right. So I'll get to say it three times. I hope y'all will wholeheartedly roll forward. I hope people do understand that it is not a new tax, as Mr. Gode made very clear, and I hope it's very clear that not everyone sees an increase in their property tax values either. That is wholly, that is not within the control of this body. That is wholly within the control of the assessor's office. And I think it's very interesting for people to be aware about how that works. And I know I have a very small sample size of a study, but between my husband and I, we have three properties in East Baton Rouge Parish. They are all largely within the same neighborhood in Mr. Gode's district, and our valuation on each of those properties differs dramatically. So our primary residence, for example, it just increased in 2020, when it increased in value by the assessor's office, it was a mere 4.3% increase, which seems pretty reasonable. This go-round, it is 12% increase, which on that property is a pretty significant part, amount, nothing that can't be absorbed by us and certainly is not a significant amount in terms to the school board. It's only a $24 increase per month to the school board, which we can absorb and happily absorb. But what's interesting is that one of the other properties, which is half the value of that property, saw a 20% increase in its property value. And so that means that its value is now really, the increase is comparable to the primary residence. And so if that home is typical of those in the middle-income brackets, that's significant. And so I bring that up because a lot of the narrative around this roll forward makes it sound like y'all are increasing property taxes, but that is not, if somebody got their tax assessment yesterday and they're kind of concerned about that, that does not have to do with you. That is wholly within the control of the assessor's office, and if it seems like it's increased dramatically, they should look to the assessor's office to question the percentage of the value increase, to make sure that their frustration or reservations about this roll forward are not misplaced. And the final property I'll mention saw no increase. So if you choose to reduce the millage that was approved by voters in this parish, then you will actually be giving that property a tax break. And so it's not. And so it's not, by the roll-forward, you're actually just maintaining that standard. It's only if you choose to reduce it that you'll actually be choosing to reduce the tax bills of some properties. And because there doesn't appear to be a lot of transparency about it, I am very concerned about the way in which this process, the assessment process coupled with the roll-forward process, shifts the tax burden from upper-income brackets to middle-income brackets and spares some.
Thank you, Ms. Nyman. Finish your thought. Thank you, Ms. Nyman. All right, Ms. Penny Mae Landry.
Hello, Penny Mae Landry, District 11. I am opposed to any increase in millages. As you know, millages are paid by property owners. There are a lot of people who do not own property, so those of us who do own property take on the burden, which I fully support, supporting our school systems because I am an education advocate. However, next year is going to be quite challenging, as I see it. Our federal government is over $35 trillion in debt. Grants are going to diminish significantly, and I know that a lot of the way that we fund things in the school system is through grants. The middle Americans in the middle part of this population are seeing the greatest burden from increase in taxes, increase in millages, et cetera. I would just ask you to please look at tightening the budget and preparing for the fact that things are going to get tougher for everyone before they get better, okay? And if we could just be aware of that, that the possibility that these millages that are collected are going to have to take care of a lot of things in the upcoming years because the federal government, as I said, has a $35 trillion debt. And none of us have a crystal ball as to what that's going to look like, and I'm an optimist. However, I'm also a realist. So please, do not put forth to the voters, many of whom are not property owners, any increase in millages and just, if your only other option is to roll forward at the existing rate, that's what I'd ask you to do. Thank you for your thoughtful consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Landry. Are there any other public comments on this item? Okay. Any members of the Board feel the need to speak one more time? This is not when we're taking a vote. We'll take that next meeting, but Mr. Goday, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to correct, well, maybe not correct, give a different view on a little bit of stuff. One is people need to realize that property taxes for homeowners and individuals are done at a 10% rate while industry pays a 15% rate. So just, industry is already paying, you know, half again as much as property owners are. And if you don't own property, it doesn't mean you're not paying property taxes. You're paying them in your rent, you're paying them in all the kinds of things that go into that rent because the guy who's renting you the apartment or whatever, he's paying the property taxes, and he doesn't have a home set exemption to offset it anyway. And so, you know, if you're, if you're living on property in East Baton Rouge Parish, you're paying the property tax, either if you're paying it directly to the assessor or you're paying it to the person you're renting from who's paying it to the assessor. And you're also paying it to the store that you're buying things from because that's part of their expenses. So there is no free ride in any of this. And so just because you don't own property, actually, a renter pays more property tax than a homeowner because they don't get the home set exemption. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goday. Somebody once said that businesses don't pay taxes, consumers do. Mr. Rust.
Thank you. I'll have more comments when we get to the item, but I'm personally not favorable to rolling forward millages. But in this specific instance, I want to state my position on why that is. Our community as a whole is feeling the squeeze of COVID. You know, in the past and during COVID, a lot of agencies or independent taxing authorities decided to freeze their millages, not to roll them forward because we're in the middle of a pandemic and things were very uncertain. People are still dealing with the incredible, incredible inflation and the effects of that inflation. When we look at property value assessments, those are reflective of inflation. The burden that property owners have in our current insurance market is incredible. I mean, I personally am paying double my property insurance than I was three years ago, and luckily, I can afford that. I have many constituents in my district and across this parish that are on fixed incomes. Rolling forward millages in this environment becomes a regressive tax. There are too many people that cannot afford to pay, look, there's an argument, and I'm going to hear this 20 different times this month on every different taxing authority, well, it's only $25 if you have a house that's worth $250,000. Well, yeah, but then you're going to couple that with about 18 other independent taxing authorities. And suddenly, all these millages that have been rolled forward are costing you hundreds and hundreds of dollars more in January when your tax bill comes due, or December, rather. And if you go talk to people that are on fixed incomes, they are putting groceries on credit cards right now. We are feeling the squeeze, and we cannot ignore that in this community, and we will continue to feel that squeeze. And it's, I cannot justify looking in the eye of a person who does not have the means to even feed their family and tell them that we don't have the money and that we need to dip further into their pocketbook when we've got tens of millions of dollars in reserves that we have not spent. We don't need this money as bad as the people in our community. And so I won't be supporting rolling forward millages in any context at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rust. President Powell Lewis.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. I do apologize for my tardiness today. Of course, you can hear that the skies are opening up and all the streets are blocked as far as traffic is concerned. But still, my question, first of all, Ms. Lopez, if you could come forward, I know I missed part of your presentation, and just for the sake of the public, my question is, what would be the consequence of us not rolling forward the millage?
About $12.9 million that's already in the budget.
Okay. And so could you give me just an example of what does that mean as far as our budget is concerned? What would that affect?
Well, because you only have approximately $4.5 million in overage in the budget you approved, then after that, you would run into a deficit, and that would be year two. And after you go into deficit after three years, then you have problems with LDOE coming in and looking at your books because you were considered unstable.
Thank you.
All right. Any further comments from the Board? Okay, I'll reserve my comments to when we actually vote on this. That concludes the public hearing. We're going to take a brief five-minute recess before we convene the regular meeting of the Board.
Colleagues, if you will make sure that you have logged into the correct meeting, please. Okay, good evening. Once again, it is 5:32 PM. Today is Thursday, August 15, 2024. Welcome to the regular meeting of the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board. This meeting is now called to order. We will entertain a roll call at this time.
District 3, President Powell Lewis.
Present.
District 9, Vice President Martin.
Present.
District 1, Mr. Blue.
Here.
District 2, Mr. Lannis. District 4, Ms. Stewart. District 5, Mr. Lewis.
Present.
District 6, Mr. Russ.
Present.
District 7, Mr. Goday.
Present.
District 8, Ms. Sule. We have a quorum.
Thank you. And for the record, I have spoken with Mr. Lannis, with Ms. Stewart, and with Ms. Sule, who all informed me that they would be absent tonight. We're now moving to Alphabet B, Minutes. Item 1, Meeting Minutes, Approval of the School Board Minutes of the July 18, 2024, Regular Board Meeting, the July 23, 2024, Special Meeting, and the July 24, 2024, Special Board Meetings, as published in the Official Journal. Is there a motion? It has been moved by Mr. Goday and seconded by Mr. Russ. Comments from the board at this time. Okay, seeing none, we will turn to comments from the public. Okay, seeing no comments from the public at this time, we'll return to comments from the board. We will entertain a vote.
Please vote.
Thank you. Thank you. Alphabet C, Information Only. The monthly financial report and personnel changes can be found on Board Docs for viewing. We're now to Alphabet D, Receive as Information, Update from our Superintendent. Mr. Cole.
Madam President, Vice President, Board Members and members of the audience, I want to take this opportunity to just give you a few updates of the first week of school. First and foremost, I'd like for everybody to give our wonderful staff who are here this evening a round of applause, being here and all the wonderful work they do all week. We have had, clap for yourself, clap for yourself, clap for yourself, Miss Wigan. We've had a wonderful opening of school. I'm extremely excited about the possibilities of the school year. Want to welcome back our 39,708 students. We've had the opportunity to visit. I think collectively, the leadership team has visited more than 70 schools in our district. I myself personally have visited over 30 schools in the last week, meeting with principals and teachers and students and parents, and just understanding what the concerns and the needs are. Myself and the leadership team had the opportunity to visit with Mr. Hamou, sitting on the front row at Tara High School on Tuesday morning. And so we had a delightful time with him, and he shared all the wonderful things that are happening at my alma mater, Tara High School. So thank you so much for that, and thank you for being here this evening. If you will notice, we have a new website. The website has been redesigned. And I want to thank April, Amy and her team for doing an outstanding job for redesigning the website. I think it is more user-friendly, and so I sincerely appreciate her having done that. We are going to have on August 29, Thursday, August 29, and Friday, August 30, showdown on the bluff. This will be the first time that East Baton Rouge Parish is going to host the high school football jamboree at Southern University. And so we are extremely excited about having our high school students be able to participate in a jamboree on a college field. Want to thank Roman Base and the Athletic Department at Southern University, as well as President Shields and Chancellor Pierre for allowing us to be there for two nights. It's going to be exciting. If you have nothing to do on that weekend, a Thursday and a Friday night, I ask all of you to come out and enjoy some high school football, support our students as they participate against each other. Hopefully, they are safe and no one gets injured. And hopefully, every high school wins, because it is a win for our district to showcase the talent at the university here locally, as well as have fans and their families and other students come out and support them. And I want everyone outside who is watching and who attends the game, show up, be supportive, and make sure we pick up the trash and clean up at the end of the game so that we can go back. We need to leave the stadium like we find it, so they will invite us back. So thank you very much, Madam President, members of the board. That concludes my report this evening.
All right. Well, we will continue going as we have our flickering lights tonight, just a little extra activity. Thank you so much, Superintendent Cole.
Madam President, could I ask a question real quick?
Sure.
Superintendent, sorry, I was hoping that you might cover this in your report, but I wanted to ask about teacher vacancies. Could you give us a rundown on where we're at with the start of school?
Sure. I'm going to defer to Ms. Hall and ask her to come up and give us a report on teacher vacancies. Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Sorry to put you on the spot.
No, no, no. I'm always, almost always ready. Just need to peel off my thing.
Also, we're having a light show or a concert or something.
Okay, hello, everyone. Okay, so I am super excited to share that we are at 176 teacher vacancies. Right now, things are still moving, and because we do have the indoor or in-house fingerprinting machine, it kind of helps to alleviate a lot of the bottleneck. So right now, how many people we have in the queue? We have about 205 individuals in the queue, teachers ready to be placed. So what will be happening over the next week, folks, we're helping them with the technical support, and then we're just going to place them in open vacancies based on their certification. So I am hopeful and optimistic that we will be, will have potentially zero vacancy by September.
I'm going to hold my applause so we don't jinx that.
Oh, no, no, please.
But that is incredible news.
Pressure helps. No, the pressure helps. We got this.
We're going to have a celebration if we have zero vacancies.
Please, I will be celebrated. Full-throated be behind that, please. Thank you, Ms. Hall. Appreciate it.
Dr. Hall, feel free to stay there.
Oh, sure.
So here's my question. What can we do to help as far as getting the word out to our community to come and apply for a job? Or, I mean, would...
So we do have our Connecting to Succeed that doesn't stop. So every Wednesday, we are here, accepting applications on the spot. Folks who already applied and they need help with technical support, just bringing their documents in, because it is a little, you know, nuance in the backend, come on down. We will take our time, sit with them, and help them to upload their documents, and then move them over to the next room, get them fingerprinted, and get them on their way. It's a different type of labor pool that we have now, but we are willing to assist them. But we do have our Connecting to Succeed every Wednesday here at IRC or here in the boardroom. And then we have fall fling coming up. But I'm praying and hoping, I hope it's okay for me to say I'm praying and hoping, that I have zero by the time September rolls around. So whatever I'm doing for the fall, meaning the fall fling, is just to kind of fill in the gaps when they come around.
So on Wednesdays, come through with all of your normal employment documents and apply for a job.
Correct. Yes, and you don't have to wait till Wednesday.
Come every day.
Come every day.
Yes, and how you all can help, please like us on our Instagram page or Facebook page and our LinkedIn page, and then reshare what we're doing in terms of our vacancies and our hiring fares. That helps. And we have a lot of support and help with other teachers in the district. They've been like referring folks to us, and we've just been on it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you. Okay. So, Mr. Shamblin, before we proceed forward, do we continue to meet in the dark if it's dark?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, well, let us continue then. Thank you. Thank you so much, Superintendent Cole, for your report. Immediately following, I have, the next is Receive as Information. Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Goday.
My question got asked, but I just wanted to say sometimes we always feel like we're in the dark anyway, so.
Yes, Lord.
But I waved, because that was the question I was going to ask.
Thank you. Okay, we will continue. So still receiving as information is the update from Board President, yours truly. And of course, you all, I like to share this information because I noticed, number one, that during the process of serving, it's a full-time job. So I just kind of wanted to share, share some information in regards to the months of June and July. First, as always, thank you so much for the opportunity to serve as your Board President for 2024. I would like to say thank you, in her absence, to Ms. Sule, who in June actually facilitated and coordinated a Fun Day Read-Aloud experience. And I don't know if you all remember what I shared, was that Ms. Sule and Mr. Russ got a chance to visit a few schools, actually, in District 3. And we quickly discovered that there were low amounts of books that were in our libraries. And from there, Ms. Sule decided that she would work with some of our local partners to begin what is referred to as the Fun Day Literacy Initiative, hoping to get donations of books to go into our libraries. And it actually morphed into a day of read-aloud activities at both Barnes &amp; Noble locations, as well as allowing Invest Our Bank to become the hub for those who would like to donate books to our school system. And so on one Saturday in June, she actually, with the program, the initiative that took place at Barnes &amp; Noble, there were quite a few readers who came through, including many of our school board members, our Deputy Superintendent at the time, Mr. Smith, the LSU Athletics teams, Mayor Broome, and several others came through and actually got a chance to read to students at Barnes &amp; Noble on that particular day. As mentioned before, there were tons and tons of donations of books. I know that Ms. Sule and members of our communication team have pictures of the books that have been donated. And I will say that there are book donations that are in the queue to be given to several schools, not just the schools that were visited on that particular day that led to this initiative. But there are tons and books, tons of books that will be given away to our libraries within our district, including Capital Elementary, J.K. Haynes, and Scottlinville Pre-Engineering Academy as well. During the month of July, I just wanted to share as well that I had the opportunity to attend an education philanthropy roundtable breakfast that was inclusive of business owners and education supporters of the metropolitan area of Baton Rouge. Of course, we can't do the work that we need to do without our partners, so thank you so much. Additionally, I am thankful that I had the opportunity to receive a personal scholarship to be a recipient and participate in the Our Collective Power Conference 2024 that was coordinated by the organization School Board Partners. The conference theme was Restoring Ourselves, Liberating Our Boards in San Antonio, Texas. And then I also had the opportunity to participate in the Southern Region School Board Association Conference that was inclusive of majority of the southern states in Biloxi, Mississippi. I have the opportunity and thankful to our teacher development team, who gave me the opportunity to serve as the guest speaker for our district's new teacher orientation. And then also, I'm thankful to Ms. Diana Payton and the YWCA family for allowing me to serve as a guest speaker for their Early Childhood Teachers Workshop. Also, I am thankful to have accompanied and presented, along with our Superintendent Cole, the status update of our district at the July Press Club Meeting, which was held at Drusilla Event Center. I'm also thankful that I had the opportunity to attend and celebrate with our district's employees during the Welcome Back Teachers Appreciation Event. You all, I think they caught me in pictures and videos dancing, because that is what I love to do. And that event was coordinated by our wonderful communications department, who did an excellent job with our teacher appreciation event and our Back to School Expo as well. We're also thankful, or I'm thankful as well, to all who participated and supported my first inaugural, and of course, we don't say annual for the first year, but inaugural Back to School Prayer Breakfast, calling together community and faith leaders in unity towards our positive school year, which is already off to a great start. And then lastly, I would like to share that I got a chance to represent our school board at the Stop the Violence prayer event that was hosted by Evangelist Kathy Tolliver. I attended and participated in a host of meetings, phone calls, and text messages within many facets of our community and with our community stakeholders throughout the months of June, July, and the beginning of this month. And then in the midst of it all, we already know that we had serious fireworks all throughout the summer, from May up until the end of July, and I am very thankful that these fireworks have led to engagements and activities and engaging conversations that have led to the appointments, again, of our new Superintendent Lamont Cole and our new Deputy Superintendent Adam Smith. Once again, congratulations to you both. Just some upcoming information that I have shared with my colleagues as well. I am super excited. You all know that Carla Powell Lewis will always be a teacher, no matter what. So I am super excited about the official launching of our EBR School Board Book Study, which begins today. We will lead our district's literacy initiatives by example, Superintendent Cole, by example, through our own book study of Great on Their Behalf: Why School Boards Fail, How Yours Can Become Effective, by Eric Journey A.J. Cabril. Here's the task or the assignment. We will read, the school board, board members, we will read four chapters between each full board meeting for the rest of the year 2024, an average of one chapter per week. During each full board meeting, beginning in September, two board members will be given three minutes each to summarize and reflect on the chapters they've read since the last board meeting. The opportunity to summarize will be given during the president's report each month. So here is the presentation schedule, Ms. Matthews. During the month of September, for the September meeting, we will have read chapters 1 through 4, and our presenters will be Mr. Blue and Mr. Martin. For the October meeting, we will have read chapters 5 through 8, and our presenters will be Mr. Lannis and Ms. Sule. And they've all received their assignment even via email. In November, we will have read chapters 9 through 12, and our presenters will be Ms. Stewart and Mr. Goday. For the December meeting, we will have read chapters 14 through 17, actually, and our presenters will be Mr. Lewis and Mr. Russ. And we will have chapter 17, and the conclusion will actually be presented by our leaders Superintendent Cole and Deputy Superintendent Smith. This activity is meant to be fun, insightful, and reflective as well. My colleagues will have the opportunity to work independently or together with their summary partners. So in addition to that, we are excited that our task forces will officially begin, and I look forward to announcing on September 1, whom our task force appointments will be. And as always, I am thankful and consider it a pleasure to serve as your school board president, and the best is still truly yet to come for our school system. We are EBR. This concludes my report. Thank you, everyone. Before we proceed forward, I just have one other question. Ms. Armond, it feels like the air is off. So did that go off with the power? Lord, okay, all right, okay, all right. We're going to keep moving then. Thank you so much. All right, we're now to Alphabet E, Reports from Board Appointees to Committees and Agencies. Are there any board appointment reviews at this point or reports at this time? Okay, all right, all right. Well, then we will proceed forward. Next is Alphabet F, Presentations, and this is the reason why I did not share my committee appointment report, because Brain is about to make a presentation, and that is the Baton Rouge Area Youth Network. If you will come forward, Mr. Cole, did you have anything to add for them before they begin? Okay, all right. Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
All right, good evening. My name is Jasmine Johnson. I am the Director of the Baton Rouge Area Youth Network, here to give a update on the EBR-Brain partnership. I do have a copy. Oh, yes, yes. Okay, so before I get started, I'm sorry, before I get started, I want to give the public an opportunity to remember who we are, so I will start by stating our mission. See, you have to be prepared. The mission of the Baton Rouge Area Youth Network is to strengthen the capacity and efficacy of youth-serving organizations in the Baton Rouge area through shared planning, learning, and resource development. Supporting our mission through our actions includes coordinating school-community partnerships in a standardized way for school improvement. This standardized coordination aims to improve access to mentors and out-of-school-time staff, complement the academic curriculum with a wider range of services and activities, as well as other resources to support in-school learning, and improve school culture and community image through exhibitions and performances that help shine the light on students whose talents may not be apparent in the classroom. We know that when school-community partnerships are effectively coordinated, safety, quality, collaboration, evaluation, and community are more substantial.
Ms. Johnson, just for a moment, just for the public and then also for our board members, I wanted to let you know that you can see the presentation, board members, on your computer screen. We do apologize to our public. Of course, we know what is going on right now, is the fact that we're having some power issues, so that's the reason why it is not being displayed on the television screens.
Yes, thank you. So in partnership with EBR PSS, Brain is implementing a model for strengthening school-community partnerships that includes credentialing youth-serving organizations interested in starting or continuing the implementation of programs during and after school. For programs to be credentialed, they must show proof of safety, effectiveness, and alignment. So here, it would have been on the screen, we have an abbreviated list of Brain members who are credentialed programs currently working in EBR with students during and outside of the school day. However, we do have a full report and look forward to scheduling a meeting with the Board of Directors whenever you are ready. While we don't have the report here, I do want to highlight the school census that aims to capture what schools have support. And I wanted to also say that this report is housed And I wanted to also say that this report is housed on the Brain website under EBR Youth Program Database, and it is updated as we find more programs. So the response rate for elementary schools was 86%, middle schools 66%, and high schools, the response rate was 54%. In the north region, we were able to identify 17 schools. In the Broadmoor Sherwood region, 12 schools. Mid-city region, 17 schools. Highland Old South Baton Rouge region, 11 schools. Southeast region, we were able to identify six schools. In the transition region, we were not able to identify any supports in that region. So we continue to work on that census to see what is in EBR and what is working. So the model that I mentioned before was divided into four phases. Some of the phases have ongoing tasks, so we are really in all four phases simultaneously. But we're in the middle of closeout, and for the sake of time, I will focus on where we are at this time. We completed the summer pilot, which included five Brain members as pilot leads, two community partners, who are also Brain members, and five schools, with four of those schools being CIR, UIR schools. The pilot participants were as follows. The Big Buddy Program partnered with Glen Oaks Middle. The Boys and Girls Clubs and the Guardian Initiative partnered with Glasgow Middle. Humanities Amped partnered with Terror High School. Scepter partnered with Progress Elementary, and Urban League partnered with Scotlandville High. The other Brain members were Go Learn Educational Solutions and The Walls Project. As part of our presentation, we are giving time to Scepter and Progress Elementary to give a testimonial, but Ms. St. Julian could not be here. So Brain's assistant director Nina Harris will give her statement, which will be followed by Dr. Hunter.
Good evening, everyone. So I'll just take a second to read a statement provided by Ms. St. Julian since she could not be here tonight. A lot of times people say, "Oh, I didn't realize your school was out there." Out there as in north Baton Rouge. But I appreciate Brain. Brain knew we were out here. I really hope the partnership continues because of the growth we saw in our students in a small timeframe. Brain takes the time to know the needs of the school. They listen to me as a school leader, and from there, we work together throughout the whole process. The way we achieve growth will be different for me and my students than for me and my students than it is for families and students in other schools. Brain realizes that. The partnership with Scepter allowed us to do what we needed to do and provided us with the resources to produce the results. And then this time, we're gonna have Dr. Hunter to come in, to come up and give a short testimony.
Good evening. Madam President, Mr. Superintendent, and other members of the board. I'm Donald Hunter, and I had the privilege and honor of working with Progress Elementary during the summer. We had 25 students. They came from 12 different schools. And we actually used a model that has been around a little bit now. We actually created it in 2009, and the first time that it was actually implemented was at CSAL. And we've since also implemented the model at Marydale and Glen Oaks Park. And in all of those instances, we saw significant gains in a very short period of time, six weeks on the part of the students. We actually use data to drive the instructional content. And we are actually assessing students and processing their data on a weekly basis. And I'm simply bringing from the State Department of Education, where I served for 18 years in the Division of Research and Development, what I know that these tests can actually be used as prescriptive inventories. And when we use them that way, we allow that data to drive the content in the classroom, which makes a significant difference in the level of students' performance. And there are data that we can share with everyone to let you see. And then there's a formal report that I believe I shared with Ms. Williams some time ago as it relates to Marydale and Glen Oaks Park Elementary about this process. Literally, let me say this, we can actually fix any school. Thank you for all your time this afternoon.
All right. Please give Scepter and Progress Elementary a round of applause for putting students first and showing that progress is possible now. So the collaboration between Brain and EBR PSS would not be possible without the steering committee appointment remaining present throughout the entire process. Thank you, Carla Powell Lewis, for staying committed. We know you have many competing priorities, but your commitment to the process shows that EBR PSS is committed to making the process safe, effective, and efficient. The Brain Steering Committee is comprised of both voting and non-voting members, and we recommend that an EBR PSS board member be appointed annually. Lastly, we want to say thank you to the Wilson Foundation and other supporters. With sincere appreciation and on behalf of the Brain Steering Committee and members, I want to take a moment to express our deepest gratitude for your generous support and unwavering belief in our mission. Thanks to your contributions, we are making strides in our project in achieving milestones that positively impact our community. Your funding has enabled us to conduct a school census and complete a summer pilot, and we are witnessing firsthand the transformative effects of this initiative. Your partnership is not just about financial support. It is about a shared vision for a brighter future. Thank you for being an integral part of this journey. Together, we are connecting, building, evaluating, and sustaining youth-serving organizations in Baton Rouge. As we close out, we just want to ask the Board of Directors and the public if they believe, if they would like, goodness, high-quality community supports that enable young people to thrive. And if so, let's work together to make it the standard. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, we will now have questions from the board. I have actually entered into the queue, Ms. Johnson. Yes, please. Thank you so much for sharing your report. And I just, I quickly, you know, want to just give a bit of a statement about how I found out about Brain, and then also some of the things that I've learned within the last year. And then also to ask questions publicly of how we can actually move forward. So you all, I am gonna be completely candid and honest that I actually discovered who Brain was as a result of emails that we received in our email portal of, I want to say, a monthly newsletter. And I kept receiving those emails, and finally, I just decided to reach out and call the number that was on the email and ask, or maybe it was the email address and ask, you know, what is this? Are you all a part of our district? Is this something that we should be paying attention to? Or what have you? And it was at that point that I spoke with Ms. Johnson, and she shared with me, well, yes, this is who we are. And what she shared was the fact that they are the vetting process for the organizations that come and serve as wraparound services within our different schools. Now, when we say the wraparound services or organizations, it's not exactly the volunteer organizations, but it is more of those that we provide some level of a professional service contract to. And then they are the ones who then are part of our schools, but may not have went through the process of being hired as an employee or as a paid employee of our district. And so what they do, what Brain does, is offer a level of vetting to make sure that they have met certain credentials, to make sure that they are fitting to be around kids, to make sure that the different organizations that support us actually fit within what our framework and what our fabric is for our district. So if we can, just for a moment, go back to, this is what's leading to my question. If we can go back to the presentation and go back to the slide, if that's even possible, to go back to the slide that shows the schools?
Are you talking about the one with the phases?
No, this one here. Go back. This one here, not the schools, the school partners. So of course, as we take a look at the school partners here, this is only a handful of school partners. And so my question, Ms. Johnson, is if we think about this, I know that there are many other partners that assist us in our work. Why are they not on this list?
So this is an abbreviated list of who is credentialed. We have a full list of who we have been able to identify. The process that we started with consisted of someone from Brain, as well as someone from EBR going to the principals' meetings and asking who or what programs are servicing your schools. We would like to improve that process with a new appointment by going out to the schools specifically, but also connecting with community partners. We did have a former superintendent send a list, I'm sorry, send a letter to all community partners to reach out to Brain, so we were able to collect some in that way. But I think we will have to have some boots on the ground, work as well as some, you know, additional support from an appointment.
So you mean pretty much someone to possibly hold maybe our school administrators accountable for reaching out and making sure that all of the wraparound services and organizations that support their schools have gone through the vetting process of Brain?
Correct.
Okay, so what is the benefit of going through that process?
So the benefit to the parish, one, you, of cour-, I'm sorry, to the school district is, one, you will have a better understanding of where your dollars are being spent. The programs will receive the technical support they need by being a part of a network of other organizations doing the same work. I often hear them say, "We just want to do what we do well," and lean on others for support. So having that collaboration in the network helps them to improve their processes. In addition, I think the most important is that we make sure everybody is operating safely. Safely means that you do have all of the insurances that are required when serving youth, so not just your general liability, but your sexual misconduct insurance and others. But Brain doesn't want to just say you can or cannot be credentialed. We want to offer you the support. So we want to know what are your barriers to becoming credentialed? What are your barriers to your organization, you know, improving the standard of what they provide to students?
Thank you. So, and I guess you all, in the process of me learning about this organization or learning about this network, I began to get concerned about, number one, who's going into our schools, you know, and what is that process? Like, if they don't have to come before us, you know, how do we have the proof that they are safe spaces for our children? That the persons that are attached to those different organizations have went through certain background checks? Do we have any of those things as our realities? And so my question, I guess, to Superintendent Cole and possibly to Mr. Shamlin is, if we wanted to hold our administrators, our school administrators, responsible for saying that the organizations that support their schools have went through a vetting process such as this, like with Brain or what have you, would that be a policy that we need to put in place or?
Well, you know, I don't have a legal mind, but I would think that it would definitely have to be a policy. I think the deeper question is, would the organizations who are seeking to do work with our schools, and we say they need to be vetted, would they have to go through Brain? If we made Brain the organization that would do the vetting? And so I think it's a twofold question, and I would defer to our general counsel to determine, A, if we had to establish the policy, would we then have to seek an organization to apply to do this work? Or could we just pick one?
Well, from my position, from a policy question, if you mandate anything as a board, it should be done through policy. And so my recommendation would be this goes into policy in some way. The board could also give the superintendent the authority to implement protocol, to implement this requirement. You could do that. But if you want to mandate it and you want to assure that it's a mandate of the board, you put it into policy.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Mr. Goday?
Yes, thank you. I too share the belief that we need to do something here. I just hate running headlong into something without giving it a lot of thought because some of these organizations are national organizations, and they're already doing all of these things. And, you know, one thing we could put in is if it's in the, we could put within the MOU that they have to provide evidence of that. What I'm trying not to do is create a bureaucracy where it becomes a hindrance and it takes more time to go ahead and do things and things like that. Because if we had it, for instance, I'm looking at the different organizations we have coming up tonight. You know, many of those are national organizations. They're already doing this, perhaps even to a deeper level than what's being talked about here. So I don't want to duplicate efforts. I don't want to create a bureaucracy. So I agree with the effort to think about this, but I suggest that we think about it and work with not only Brain, but work with also the vendors who are bringing these things in, and let them come to us with a thing of, okay, here's how we can go about maybe doing this that's efficient and timely as we go through this. And maybe we can start incorporating some of these things into our MOUs, which gives it a bite to do that. I just don't want to rush headlong into something without really getting the other vendors involved in the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so with that in mind, you all, that was my goal, Mr. Goday, is to bring this to the forefront, that we would begin to have the necessary conversations around this. Also, I wanted to share too that when I got a chance to meet Ms. Johnson, I began to ask questions about what is the difference in what they do versus what VIPS does, volunteers in public schools? And there's clearly a difference. The, yes, one would be the fact that our organizations that operate, that possibly have a professional service contract with us is different from those who may be volunteering within our schools. So of course, some of the actions and the task or, you know, some of the vetting process may be the same, but those are two different sectors of our communities that actually operate within our schools. So Brain, of course, generally supports those that have some level of a professional service with us. And VIPS supports those who are volunteers that are coming into our schools as well. So I wanted to provide clarity there also. Thank you so much.
Do I have minutes to respond?
Sure.
Okay, I just, no, I didn't. I did not feel attacked. Assume positive intent. I just wanted to add to, because the public can't see the presentation, I wanted to highlight that several of the organizations that are in this room are on this list. And I will say that it was very easy for them to be credentialed because the national standard is what we used. When I stand here as the director, I am not saying that Brain created a youth development standard from scratch. We took best practices from the nationwide standard for several reasons, including being attracted to federal funding possibilities. So Brain is not here to reinvent the wheel. We're here to raise the standard for all youth organizations or youth-serving organizations. all youth organizations or youth-serving organizations. So yes, you are right, the ones that are sitting in here are national, and they do have, uh, these credentials, you'll even see Catholic charities on here, they were actually the superstar, because their standards are even higher. However, there are organizations, um, serving your students who, um, are, are, they, um, face barriers when trying to reach the standard, and that is the point of the network. Um, so yes, we are definitely not here to, you know, tap anyone on the hand, it's, it's really to help everyone get to the standard that these, like, I'm just going to shout out City Year, Kids Orchestra, um, I saw them both in here. So yes, that is what, what we're here to do.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right, we will now proceed forward with Alphabet G, unfinished business?
Madam President?
Yes.
May I, may I ask, is the?
Sure.
I don't know if it's a personal preference or whatever, it's going to get awfully hot in here.
Yes.
Could, and we have many chairs in this room, can we ask, any speakers actually come into the room, so we're not waiting on people walking in and out of the room? And you might want to consider a two-minute limit instead of three-minute, but I can leave that to you. But could we ask that speakers come into the room, so we can have a very efficient, orderly process through the speakers? Because I don't want to limit anyone's time to speak, but it's going to get very warm in here before long.
Absolutely. If there is no opposition, we will, um, alter, number one, our time limits, uh, if possible, if we can give our, uh, board three minutes and, uh, our, our public one. Uh, and then at the same time, if you are in the hallways, if you will make your way into the actual boardroom, um, and I, what I will do is I'll commit to calling more than one name at a time for the different, um, agenda items that we have. Also, special thank you to our East Baton Rouge Parish, uh, district personnel who's passing out water at this time, meeting the need, we really, really appreciate that. Thank you so much. Okay, item G1, unfinished business, Deputy Superintendent, uh, contract, I want to ask, if possible, if we can, if there is no opposition, if we can take some of our agenda items out of the original order? And so if we can move, uh, G1 and place that item after the consent agenda? If there is no objection? Okay, all right, so thank you. We will take item G1 and place it after the consent agenda. Okay? All right, thank you. Let us move to item G2, professional services contract, Kids Orchestra, consideration of a request for the approval of a professional services contract between the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board and Kids Orchestra in the amount of $210,000 to provide services for the Kids Orchestra after-school program for 2024, 2025, strategic alignment, student achievement, funding source, general fund, ESER, and fine arts. Um, before we take a motion, Superintendent Cole, did you have anything you'd like to add?
Yes, absolutely. After the last meeting, uh, there was some discussion about expanding the opportunities for Kids Orchestra. Uh, myself and Mr. Joffreyon had a meeting with the gentleman, uh, from Kids Orchestra, and I asked him if they would give us some options of the services they could br-, could provide at maximum capacity, and then some other options for the board to review. Uh, so I wanted you all to have that information, and it was emailed to you, uh, to look at if we were to provide the Kids Orchestra after-school at a number of different schools across the parish at the maximum capacity they could serve versus some of the options they gave us last time. And then, uh, from that point, uh, if you all preferred an option, we would get with, uh, some of the different funding sources in the district, have some robust conversation before the next meeting, and then make sure we provide any of the funding sources and backup information, so the general public would know, uh, where the funding sources are coming from based on what you choose this evening. And so, uh, I think the gentleman from Kids Orchestra may want to come up and speak to that conversation a little bit this evening.
Thank you.
Hello, I am, uh, Dr. Patrick Tuck, the Executive Director of Kids Orchestra. Um, also, uh, as Jasmine mentioned, we are a Brain-certified organization. Um, in addition to that, two of our staff, myself and Sam Trevathan, who can't be with us this evening, are advisory council members for the Louisiana Center for After-School Learning. Um, so that we've got some knowledge of it about after-school programming that we bring to the table when we have our conversations. I'd like to defer, um, the rest of our presentation to our operations director, who will actually put together the proposal that, uh, that we're going to discuss tonight.
Um, good afternoon, uh, my name is Dr. Brian Gallion, I'm the Operations Director for Kids Orchestra. Um, uh, as Superintendent Cole mentioned, we did have, uh, three proposals that we presented. Um, the first one that's in front of you is for 15 standalone sites, um, where we would reach, uh, 525 kids across the district, um, at roughly $1,000 per child for the, uh, for, for the funding from the district. Um, that's about half of what the actual program would cost. We raised the rest of it through tuition, through grant, uh, writing, donations, things like that. Um, the second option there, um, is for, uh, $310,000 to serve, I believe it's, uh, roughly 310 kids, 320 kids, I don't have it in front of me, I'm not sure if there's a way to actually pull this up on here. 335, thank you, okay, I've got it.
You all live their way?
No, it's okay, I've got it on my phone.
Okay.
Sorry. Um, at $310,000, that's a little bit of a different, um, model where we would have, um, hubs and feeder schools. Um, this was a recommendation by Mr. Joffreyon, so it's a little bit more efficient. Um, but the, the, the difference is there that the district would be responsible for bringing in, uh, buses and, uh, funding moving kids from one school to another, for example, Progress to Ryan, Villalray to Audubon. Um, uh, and that's, uh, yeah, that's option, uh, two, um, and, um, that would be all of our sites from last year plus those two additional feeder sites. Um, option three, um, is essentially what, uh, is before the board now, with, uh, a little bit of an adjustment for that feeder model, um, uh, moving the contract to $240,000 instead of 210, so we can bring Villalray and, and Audubon, uh, excuse me, Villalray and Audubon together, and Progress and, uh, Ryan together.
Thank you.
Sure.
All right, so considering, um, is there a motion, or did you have a question, Mr. Baloo? Okay, uh, Mr. Baloo?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, for each of these options, you give a projected amount of students. Now, is that, uh, a maximum that you can serve, or is that just a, a pure projection?
It's, it's a, it's a projection. It's not a maximum, and we can always go up. Um, uh, there, there are, uh, some schools that we've had partnerships with for, um, upwards of 10 years, BR Flame, Westdale, Dufrock, where we know that we can get to 40, 50, even 60 kids. Uh, in fact, we opened registration on Wednesday, and BR Flame is almost full. Um, I think there's about 50 kids that have already signed up for that one. Um, but it is a projection on how many kids we think that we can get, especially at some of the newer partners. Um, that's why, you know, a lot of those newer schools that aren't in our, um, aren't in our program right now are down in the 30 to 35 kids, uh, because it takes a little while to actually build that relationship, uh, up with, uh, the school and with the families in the community.
So depending on demand, um, is there an increased cost if, if, uh, uh, say the, the hub model, the, the second choice, if there was, instead of 335, if, uh, say 375, uh, students were interested, uh, would there be an increased cost, or are these pretty fixed costs?
Those are pretty fixed costs, yes, sir.
Is there, is there a limit to the number of students, um, on any of these models that, uh, can be served?
We don't like to go past 50 to 60 kids, um, at each site. It's just, in, in the after-school hours, it, it gets a little bit unmanageable, no matter how many staff we have on site. Um, so we, we like to count them, you know, between 50 and 60.
So I guess, if we want to do the math, you can just, the number of sites times 60 would be the absolute maximum?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And, and based on your experience, uh, in past years, what, what do you think the, I guess these projections are the demand, uh, or, or interest from students to participate?
Yes, sir, we, we typically can pull in about 10% of a student pop-, uh, student population, um, after we've been there for a couple of years. So if it's a school of about 400 kids, we can usually get about 40 that are interested in the after-school program.
All right, well, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Russ.
Thank you. Um, thank you to Superintendent Cole and, uh, Kids Orchestra for working together and, uh, putting together some options for us, I really appreciate that. Um, and I had a question about, um, again, like Mr. Baloo, talking about, um, kind of the budget on these different funding selections. Uh, when we're talking about proposed enrollment, is this, is this the number of kids that qualify for no tuition in your program? Because I know that if, for instance, um, you've, at some schools, if, if, if you're not, uh, if you're making a certain amount of money in your family, you guys require that there's some tuition paid, right? So is this outside of that, or is this just kind of just holistically, like, how many kids you expect to serve with that amount of money?
This is how many kids we expect to serve with that amount of money. And just for, for clarification, um, all of the students that are enrolled in Kids Orchestra, um, are on a sliding scale of tuition, uh, model. So for example, uh, families that are, um, in the $0 to $50,000 range, they pay $50 for the year for the program, it ends up to be about $6.25 a month. Um, the program costs about $2,000 to run, and that's where the district support comes from, um, and raising funds through, um, United Way Grants and, um, you know, corporate donors and, and things like that.
Okay, thank you. And, you know, that's something I like, I want to make sure people are aware of, and how, how you work with people, meeting them where they are.
Yes, sir.
Um, and, and making sure, especially, you know, in some of our schools, that can be more affluent in the student body, um, that people are aware that this is not limiting access to kids, right?
Correct.
But thank you. Um, I, I think, you know, I, I would love to just throw every bit of money I can at you guys, but I also, you know, think it's, it's important to be good partners, um, and, and respect how you can grow a nonprofit, um, in a, in a responsible way. Uh, my hope, and if my colleagues would support it, I would, uh, move that, uh, the board would approve option two, the hub model, for this school year, uh, and give Kids Orchestra an increase in funding, but allow them, being that school has started, um, to hopefully, I think even that is going to be some work and a stretch for you guys to accomplish. I don't want to throw too much money at you as, at once, and push you into a whole lot of schools. Uh, tell me if I'm wrong there, but I think that that would be a, a good, responsible choice, but also offer, um, so, you know, put some, put some more money at the table, so.
Okay, so it has been moved by Mr. Russ and seconded by Mr. Godey, that we accept option two, uh, of the proposal that Kids Orchestra has, uh, presented to us. Okay, moving on to, uh, public, to, uh, board comments still, Mr. Lewis.
Uh, excuse me, yeah, there's no secret about the value of music, you know, in school and how it enhances, you know, uh, a child's academic performance all the way around. But pivoting back to the comments made by, uh, Superintendent Cole, there's been some robust conversation around this and these options. So I'd like to, I would like for those conversations to continue. So I'm going to make a motion that we defer this item until the next full board meeting. Sub-, I'm sorry, substitute motion, that we defer this item to the next full board men-, uh, board meeting.
Okay, so, uh, we have a substitute motion on the floor to defer this item until the next board meeting, um, that is.
Full board meeting.
Next full board meeting.
Okay.
Okay, so that is, it has been moved by Mr. Lewis and seconded by Mr. Martin. Comments from the board, Mr. Martin?
Thank you. Um, Superintendent Cole, am I correct in understanding that we, we, because of, of, when you actually started on the job and how quickly you've had these conversations, it, we, staff has not had an adequate amount of time to fully identify the exact source of funding for each of these models and the different price points, is that, is that correct?
Somewhat, uh, staff has had some conversation about the funding, uh, opportunities, but in effort, uh, to be transparent and for the board to, to make sure that when, uh, you have the discussion about the item, uh, the, the public is aware of where the funding sources are coming from. I wanted to make sure you had the options for this evening, and then, uh, we could get the backup information to provide this, or the support, where the financial support would come from. Uh, I think, uh, Mr. Joffreyon has done an excellent job, meeting with, uh, various different, uh, chiefs around what funding could be, uh, lended to this opportunity, but we didn't have the backup information tonight, simply because, uh, we weren't aware of what options were going to be chose, and everything was moving, uh, relatively quickly in terms of my discussions with Kid Orchestra, and then asking them to go have those conversations, yes.
Thank you, that's, that's, that's my only reason for, um, uh, supporting the substitute motion, is I think it's important for the public to, to have, and, and us, to have an opportunity to understand exactly what the financial impact is of, of each of the different options, um, whether that's included in the budget, whether it's going to require any budget adjustments, whether it's going to require more money from the Title I funds of the participating schools and so forth. Um, let me ask Kids Orchestra, if, if, if we don't have a contract in place with you for another month, if the board doesn't take action tonight, is that going to particularly hinder when the after-school program starts and so forth?
Yes.
Okay. How badly?
A lot, very, yeah. Uh, you know, we have, we do have staff that we pay to do this work, and the more we delay by months at a time, um, the work to begin, it really does hinder us as far as hiring the teachers that work in the schools.
In the ordinary course of business, if we had, say, approved this contract, you know, a month ago, um, when, when would you have actually started working with the kids?
Um, before the last board meeting, before the last committee meeting. We actually would start in July. We, we start, we start hiring and recruiting staff in July and meeting with the principals. So it, um, we did, based on the recommendation from the last meeting, open up enrollment and start having principal meetings, but, um, yeah, it would put us significantly behind.
So Superintendent Cole, um, I think, if I understand the numbers that I'm looking at in the, in the presentation, um, or, or the supporting memo, option two is fairly close, a little bit more maybe than, than what was on the, the, the docket at the committee of the whole.
And, and again, uh, if Mr. Joffreyon will come up, I think he's spoken, uh, to some staff to discuss some of the funding sources. Go ahead, Mr. Joffreyon.
Good evening, board, yes, we have secured, uh, the, the funding for whatever amount you, uh, picked tonight.
So, all right, so, so, I mean, do we, do we know, I mean, we, we, what was the amount that was on, that was, that was kind of proposed at the committee of the whole, Mr. Joffreyon?
The first one was the 240,000, that was the, it was 175, then when the meeting changed, it, we went to add Shenandoah to the list as well, which brought it to the 240, 220, sorry, 210, I got three numbers in my head. And then from that, we went to the board again with Superintendent Cole to come up with the second and third amount that you see there.
The, the, the 310?
Yes.
Okay, so, so the difference, the only real difference between this option two and what was presented and included in the supporting materials at the committee of the whole is the addition of Shenandoah to kind of function as a hub?
Correct, to give those schools and those surrounding schools in that area an opportunity.
All right. Then, then, I'm allowed to, well, Mr. Shamblin's not here, I think I'm allowed to speak against the, even though it's the second, I can't, no, can I, I can't speak against, I can vote against the substitute motion. All right, I, um, it, it may be appropriate, um, it may be appropriate for us to consider going ahead and picking option, um, two, simply so as not to delay the provision of these services to the kids.
So are you, um, rescinding your second on that motion? Okay. Shall we continue with, with board comment? Okay, and then we can come back to that.
Mr. Lewis and I can always withdraw the substitute motion if we choose to in a minute.
Okay, Mr. Godey?
Let's hear the rest of the comments.
Yeah, some of the comments that have just been made or was, I want to bring up, I'm afraid that we will hamstring the, uh, orchestra, Kids Orchestra with delaying, because we already are behind. You know, one of the things we need to revamp in our budget process is, these kind of decisions need to be made in May or earlier, uh, not now, so staffing can be done, because we'll come up with these issues across the board with outside groups who are doing this. Uh, also, you know, and, and speaking to the budget, I really believe we ought to hold the budgets, but recu- but recognize that $70,000 is .001% of our budget. Nothing we do is that accurate. It is, the, the level of dollars within this change is within the accuracy of what we do today, and to, to say it's not fool, is just fooling ourselves. So I, I agree with Mr. Russ. I think we can expand this without going whole hog on the thing, see how it works, because McKinley Elementary gets something in here, too, and I know they've had some issues with things cutting back, so I really would like to see us go forward with the option two, and let's get the move on, and then hopefully, in the fall or early spring, we can revisit these and decide how we do these, because the scope of these things really should be decided as part of the budget process, not now. And so I, I would strongly suggest we go with option, with the option that's, yeah, option two, and, and let's move forward and get on with life. Thanks.
Thank you. I've entered into the queue as well. So Mr. Joffreyon, I wanted to ask, you, you mentioned that the funding is in place.
Yes, ma'am.
So could you just expound just a little bit on, I know that what is in our, our general budget versus where the additional funding may come from?
Title I has been secured, has secured 240,000 of this by Dr. Bethely, and the other would be just general fund. And remember when you first got the memo, 175 was going to actually be covered by general fund.
Thank you.
You are.
And Mr. Bryan, I just want to ask, when we think about option two.
Yes, ma'am.
Is this the same way that Kids Orchestra has operated before in the past? When I go back to remembering the Dufrock hub site and the bus dropping the students off, is this the same process? And if you could speak to that for a moment?
Sure. It, it is very similar to, between 2016 and 2019, we had a federal grant that allowed us to create those hub sites. I think one of the advantages of the way that this is set up, and this was a suggestion by Mr. Joffreyon, is that, for example, Progress going to Ryan, Kids Orchestra would actually hire a staff member from Progress to be on the bus with the kids, or travel with the kids from Progress to Ryan, and then remain on-site to help with classroom management, to help with communicating with families and things like that. So that would allow for, you know, two full-time staff, or two, not full-time, excuse me, two staff members to be on-site, in addition to all of our teaching artists that are, that are doing the music, the SEL, and the snack and the homework.
Thank you. And so that leads to one more question. I know we have been very careful in, in holding our hand down on transportation, and I know in the past, when we've done this, I know you all use like first student as your bus transportation. So are we prepared, Mr. Cole, for being able to use our, our bus system for the after-school process?
Absolutely.
I, I will point out, it's, we're only talking about two buses.
Okay.
We're talking Progress to Ryan, which is only a mile away from it, and then Villa del Rey to Ottoman, which is, I think, 2.1 miles.
Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Russ.
Mr. Lewis, do you want to go ahead?
Point of information, a point of personal privilege?
Yes, sir.
You know, last year, we sit here and we talked about Kids Orchestra. You guys were looking for funding last year. You received the funding. Mr. Godey just mentioned that this should be a part of our budgeting process in May. I'm sure that was mentioned last year. If it was not, my bad, okay? But I'm looking at your schools. On your first option, I wasn't here at the last meeting, guys, okay? I'm late to the party. I'm looking at Broadmoor Elementary, D, Clayborne Elementary, F, Villa del Rey, D, McKinley Elementary, D, Jefferson Terrace, F. Now, when I first spoke a little while ago, I said, there's no secret to the benefit of music and a child's overall development. Now I go down to option two, and I don't see many of those grossly underperforming schools in that model. That bothers me. It bothered me last year, it's bothering me tonight. If we're going to move this district forward, and if you want to be a partner in moving this district forward, we have got to address the subgroups in our schools. We can't just keep catering to the higher performing schools, because a lot of those kids, I'm willing to bet you, their parents could pay for private music lessons if they really wanted them to have them. I'm gonna go along with Mr. Martin, but I promise you, do not show up next year asking for funds when you should be here in May. You will not get my support.
If I can give a point of information as well, so Coach, then that means you, if, if you guys rescind your substitute motion, would Coach be able to make a substitute motion and, and receive option one? Because that's what it sounds like.
We talked about option two. I was just using option one as an example of the schools that were mentioned in option one, as opposed to the schools in option two.
Okay. Mr. Joffreyon, and, and I'm just sorry, y'all, y'all know, I, I, shameless plug. Do we have the money available to do option one? I'm just asking, just for a friend.
Yes, yes, ma'am, we do.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you.
Why can't we put some of those schools in option two? I'm just asking. Because we want to talk about turning the district around and addressing subgroups, but then we spend a ton of money and none of those subgroups are even included.
Well, just for, just for clarification, some of those schools that were in the first option, we would love to keep them. They were, you, there were some schools that were in youth last year, but kids were not coming to the program.
Whose fault was that?
The principal was there, as well as the teachers, as well as counselors.
The principal. Now, we just talked about principals getting outside agencies to go with Brain.
Talk in the mic, Mr. Lewis.
Do I really need the mic?
Yes, we're asking for it.
Okay. We just sat here and had somebody talking about Brain, about how you were going to put the principals, make the principals responsible for getting organizations to apply with Brain, and we can't get a principal to get a child to come to something that's academically important to them? I don't know. Well, okay, let's blame the principals and whoever's next in line, I guess.
No, it's not a blame, Coach. It's just, we, we have the programs there. Kids Orchestra has been playing a big part in doing the recruiting, as well as the fine arts department, but we, our principals support that. So we try, and our principals have. But for other reasons, it could be other after-school programs, it could be sports, it could be several other reasons that we can't get them to the program in certain schools.
Okay, so I hope.
Thank you for my, my point of personal privilege and ranting a little bit.
That's all right.
But it, it upsets me when I look down a sheet of paper and I see a bunch of A and B schools.
Yes, sir.
Getting all the gravy.
Yes, sir.
And D and F schools getting seamlessly left out.
If, if I may take up a point of personal privilege as well, I know we're using the point, the, the privilege and the information quite a bit today. Coach, don't leave out, because I, I need to speak, point of personal privilege. So my personal privilege is that.
I gotta, you gotta talk about your ologists about that.
Sir.
I'm sorry.
Okay, well, I'm gonna hold my personal privilege, because I wanted you to hear what I had to say. So.
Can I go ahead while he's using his bathroom?
Sure. Come on, Mr. Russ, come on.
Thank you. I, I wanted Mr. Lewis to be able to speak, because I knew he was gonna withdraw his motion, and we get back to the original motion after we chatted.
But I don't know if he withdrew.
No, he didn't actually withdraw, and I have a.
He's gonna need to clarify that, but he.
I, I have a couple of questions that I wanted to ask, which is why I got in the queue.
Okay. All right, so we're gonna let him finish and then.
Since we're still on the original motion, either way. Thank you to Kids Orchestra. We don't ever want our partners to be in a position where school has started and you cannot do your work, and I'm sorry that you're in that position. Sometimes we get caught between a rock and a hard place trying to do this work, and clearly we're all very passionate about our children, and I appreciate Mr. Lewis's passion for wanting kids, all of our kids, to have access to these programs. Going back to conversations we've had, what I will ask Mr. Cole is to be reminded that when we come to next year's budget, when we're working with our partners, we've got to have a better process for how we make decisions about how we fund, what we want to fund as a board and as a system, how we work with them so that they're not at the, you know, seven days after school has started, trying to get going, but we're holding them up. I've had this conversation with multiple, multiple partners this week that are waiting on us to give them the go-ahead on what they need, because we don't have a good process and system for how we make these decisions. So that's my piece. Thank you.
Thank you. Don't worry, I held my point of personal privilege for you. So Coach, I just wanted to share, and this is not just for Coach Lewis, this is, this is for anybody and everyone who's listening, firsthand experiences. And you guys have heard me talk about how Kids Orchestra has, had literally changed my life. And what I mean by that is, my son went to Dufrock, in all honesty, that's one of the reasons why I kept him there as long as I did. We lived in the Scotlandville area, so he was a transfer bus student, got a cell phone way earlier than what I wanted him to get, because he was riding a transfer bus. But in second grade, he was introduced to a violin. Now with Kids Orchestra, it's an after-school program. So with it being an after-school program, what that means is that, yes, the principal introduces the program to the parent, but the parent has to make sure that the child stays. So if the parent does not allow the child to stay, the children do not get a chance to enjoy the program. And that, it has been the issue. So for me, even with my son being one of those students, being a single parent and a teacher, not making a lot of money, I was on a sliding scale. Once the child, the child would get on the bus from Dufrock, go to, I believe, is it St. James downtown? Is where the hub site was at that time. Take the class, come back, and then I had to be available to pick up my child at 5:30. If I didn't allow my child to stay, they couldn't be a part of the program. And so that's what we have to remember as well. And I know that Mother Pearl would appreciate this as well, that we have to hold our parents accountable. We can't just say that it's administration. You know, we have to make sure that our parents know that these programs are available and that we can offer it to them, and then at the same time, maybe we need to be more creative with transportation home, or, or whatever the case is, but it's not just the principal.
I understand that, Ms. Powell, but you know what? Somewhere tonight, in this meeting, parental involvement or parental engagement is going to rear its head. I've been in this district 15 years, and I've never, I have to yet see it become a priority for parental engagement. It's something that we give a lot of voice to, but when the rubber hits the road, we just want parental involvement. We don't want to engage, we don't want to talk to our parents. Until we can move and get out of our own comfort zones and stop talking to hear ourselves talk, and engage the parents, the grandparents, then we're going to stay the same old EBR.
No, I don't, I don't, I have no comment for Mr. Lewis's statement. I agree 100%.
Mr. Martin.
Thank you. I remember having the same conversations last year that Mr. Lewis talked about, and we talked at length. It was one of the first contracts that we ever voted on when, after I took office, the, and, and there was extensive discussion about the equity of which schools were chosen. That was the number one question that Mr. Russ and I and Mr. Lewis and others asked at that time. We all did say that we need to get this done earlier. That's not Kids Orchestra's fault, that's the district's fault. We did not, we failed. We did not do what we needed to do in order to reform the budget process and bring these kind of contracts to, to the board on a timely basis. And to that end, Superintendent Cole, I, I very much appreciate you providing us this, this kind of calendar of, of, of when major things will happen, as we, as a work in progress, obviously. I, I think we need to put in May that that's when we do all of our partner contracts, right? If, if they're going to be providing support in our schools, then we make those decisions in, in May at the latest, so that everybody can be ready to go. So turning back to the item at hand, what I wonder is if there's a way, because I frankly think this is a great program, and I like the expanded schools that are covered in, in option one. I, I'm a little concerned about voting for something before we've got fully supporting documentation for the public to see it, but also, we're, we're overdue approving this contract to begin with. So I wanted to ask Council and Superintendent Cole, and Kids Orchestra for that matter, is it possible that we could approve option two tonight and direct staff to work with Kids Orchestra to see, so we can consider a month from now, whether we could add in the remaining schools for, for option one? And then we would get most of the schools started, and we could start a little bit late, maybe, with, with, with the additional four schools or so, that might also then give, give time to, to those schools where, where maybe you need a little more work to get the parental involvement and so forth that we need in there to, to market that to folks, to encourage them to participate. Is that a possibility, Superintendent Cole?
Absolutely.
Then, 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 then I might suggest to my colleague, Mr. Lewis, that we withdraw the substitute motion and make it a, a different substitute motion, which would be, which would be to approve option two, but also direct the staff to bring us a proposal that would add in the additional schools from option one for our consideration a month from now. Would you be supportive of that, Coach?
Yes.
Just a, a point of order, it sounds more like a friendly amendment, I'm sure.
Could we, could, Mr. Russ, would you be amenable to that as a friendly amendment?
Yes.
Okay, so then Mr. Lewis would withdraw, and I would withdraw the substitute motion?
We'll withdraw it under, under the conditions that the four schools, the, the other schools are bought to us at a later date and we can get them in the program. I withdraw the motion.
Okay. I, I approve of the withdrawal.
Proposals to add.
And, and we offer that friendly amendment, Mr. Russ.
Do I need to state that?
Yes, please.
Okay. So to, to amend my original motion.
Mr. Russ, just for a moment, I believe that Kids Orchestra wanted to intervene just for a minute.
With the addition of the four schools at a later date, in order to prepare to go into those schools, we think it would be good to set a start date of January, so that we have time to meet with the schools and the parents and make sure that we're doing this right.
We, we could cover, that could be part of your proposal in, in a month.
We'll leave that to you guys to tell us.
Thank you.
It's going to take into January?
We normally start in July to, to start programming and October, late September. Yes, it takes that long. We have to meet with schools, we have to meet with school administrators, we have to meet with parents, we have to recruit, we have to engage the kids. It takes that long to do this job right.
And we're gonna do it right.
Okay, we'll see.
All right, you are. So, Mr. Martin?
I think it's Mr. Russ, it's his original motion.
Okay, Mr. Russ.
So I'd like to amend my original motion to, let's see how to word this, to approve option two with the addition of the request that Kids Orchestra come back with an additional proposal at the September Committee of the Hall, to add the four additional schools missing from option three. Does that cover us?
It's option one.
It's option one.
As a, as a, as a point of, of order, could we, could we add that to delegate to the Committee of the Hall to give final approval to that, so that we could not have to, so that they could maybe start faster? That's only a couple, three weeks away.
Yeah.
That makes a difference, it does.
Certainly.
Yeah, let me, I want some, I need, yeah, I just need clarity on that. So, Mr. Martin, are you suggesting that the, the, the board's action tonight moved this item to the cow?
I'm suggesting that we would, that, that we would approve option, the, the approval of option two would be effective tonight, but that we further, as part of the addition to the friendly amendment to that motion, that we would. that motion, that we would delegate to the Committee of the Whole authority to grant final approval to, if we so choose at that time, to an expanded proposal. Yeah, I don't know that we can, Committee of the Whole isn't designed for final approvals. It might be better to do that in a special meeting prior to the Committee of the Whole at night.
May I make a suggestion?
Yes, sir.
There seems to be agreement that we want to go bigger. Well, never mind.
But in my mind, if we had a quick special meeting, they say it can make a difference into Coach Lewis's point, speed, you know, matters to these kids. So that gives us two weeks to better understand the financial details, get that as soon as we can so that the public has a chance to see the source of funds and so forth. So then I would suggest, Mr. Rust, that the friendly amendment be to approve Option 2 and to ask the Kids Orchestra to present a revised proposal that would expand to the other schools in Option 1 and present that to us at a special board meeting held right before the next Committee of the Whole.
Yes.
You get that?
You agree with that, Mike? Mike agrees.
So Kids Orchestra, three weeks is long enough? Yes? Okay. All right.
For giving you guys the information about the next proposal?
That's right.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Okay, so considering that that is a friendly amendment, yes? Okay. All right, then what we will do is, we have finished with board comments, we will now turn to comments from the public at this time. Dr. Finney. And let me go ahead and I'll read the rest of the list as well. Dr. Finney, Ms. McMillan, Mr. Stewart, Ms. Nyman. Okay? Thank you.
This was an inequitable use of funds two years ago. It was an inequitable use of funds last year. And I think you're being far too generous for Kids Orchestra for them coming in August with their proposal. You know, maybe they tried to get this on your agenda early on. I don't know that, maybe you do. But I'm not convinced that this is a good use of money. However, it appears that many of you are convinced it is. So why waste time in three weeks just to prove Option 1 if that's what you want to do? I have no idea how you're going to pay for the first $240,000. Apparently, you've got the administration rearranging funds however they want, irregardless of the budget process. But whatever you do, this isn't reaching every kid, and it needs to reach every kid, especially those that need to ride the bus home at the end of the school day. So you haven't put an instrumental music experience available to every kid, and you need to do that years ago. Thank you.
Ms. McMillan.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Tanya McMillan. I have a parent here in East Baton Rouge Parish School System. And I would like you guys to explore a way to offer Kids Orchestra to every student or every elementary student in East Baton Rouge Parish. If we have the sites that we have, it's just a matter of logistics and finding out how to get kids from one school to the next. If we have a school that it was at and we had low participation, it's not fair to take it away from that whole school and the kids who were showing up. So if it's a matter of getting those one, two, three, four, or five kids to the school down the street, let's just get them to the school down the street. We can't take away their opportunity because not enough kids in their school took advantage of it. And I think it should be noted, too, that this program has been at Flame for, what did they say, 10 years? And we just now talking about getting into other kids? That's the problem. And this is just one example of things that some schools have and other schools don't. And we can start with teachers that are being invested into as well. So it's a lot of things we can look at, but let's try to get it to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McMillan.
Madam President, Vice President, Superintendent Cole, and the remainder of the board and the audience and all of the listening audience as well. First of all, I'm a graduate of EBR School Systems. I attended Baton Rouge High. I played in the orchestra slash symphony, the jazz band, and it was one of the most fabulous experiences I have ever had in my life. My mother, God rest her soul, she's a retired music teacher from the East Baton Rouge Parish School System. She was instrumental in brokering a deal with the Baton Rouge Symphony Orchestra where they played for the children, children who ordinarily would not have a, they used to go to the River Center, it was the Centreplex at the time, and experience the orchestra. They need to have music in every school. What is the, and I'm not pouring cold water on the Kids Orchestra, what are they doing that we can't hire teachers in every school, a music teacher, to expose these children during the day to music? I think those funds would be better spent there. And Coach, to talk about parental involvement, brother, I've been preaching, screaming, crying, hooting, and hollering, screaming. The bottom line is, we have a generation of young parents who in many instances were not prepared to be parents. These are the parents, the children, that attend our school system.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart.
And we are going to have to employ some modality, Superintendent Cole, to motivate these parents, to get them to understand that education is the most, one of the most important items in their children's lives.
Mr. Stewart, thank you so much.
And not Air Jordan tennis shoes and tattoos and all this.
Bye-bye, Mr. Stewart. See you on the next item. Ms. Nyman.
Good evening again. Tanya and I'm in District 7. So you'll notice that on my card, I don't have in support or opposition. I kind of just wanted to speak to the frustration that's been expressed about the inability to get music education equitably provided across the district. And so I'm a product of New Orleans Public Schools. I went to Jean Gordon Elementary. I was in an elementary school in the 70s. My public school was racially diverse, it was socio-economically diverse, and we had music in the school, like we had music class during the day. And I know there's a myriad of reasons why music education has been eliminated from our public education system, and it's not within this board's control specifically, and it's heartbreaking. And I just want to speak to how heartbreaking that is, but I also want to point out how Kids Orchestra is an attempt to mitigate that harm, but it is inadequate for the reasons that people are talking about. My parents, are you kidding me? I'm out of time?
Yes, ma'am. It's called the heat right now, so that's why we have, we're supposed to be at a three and a one-minute, three-minute for board and one-minute for public.
I just want to say that my family was modest means, we didn't have a car. So that's how you avoid blaming the parents for not providing their children with the opportunity when they have it in the school, and they don't have a car and they can't pick up their kid, they still get music education.
Thank you. Seeing no further public comment at this time, I have entered into the queue, and I have a question I want to say possibly for Ms. Lopez. If you can come forward, please. My question is in regards to, what does it take to hire a teacher financially? How much does that cost us versus how much we pay Kids Orchestra per employee that you all have? You know, how does that work? I believe that there's going to be a difference in number there.
So a first-year teacher with a bachelor's degree coming out of school starts at $50,000. You add 30% on that. I always use about $65,000. It's just an average of what a teacher makes. The teachers that will be working after school, if it's an after-school program like extended day, the schools get the choice of choosing the amount that they pay, whether it be $25, $30, or $35 an hour for the teacher to stay.
Thank you so much. One other gentleman from Kids Orchestra, really, really quickly. How many teachers will you employ through this process? Music teachers, that is.
Yeah, the music teachers who are either professional musicians or music education majors at local universities. We employed about 80 teachers last year.
Okay. So $300,000 divided by 80, Mr. Godey, is what? I knew that, what we know is that that's not $50,000 per teacher.
Sorry, that was program, I should say, that was program-wide, so.
Okay, program-wide.
Yeah, so about a quarter of that for EBR schools. Or half to, yeah, more like a half of that for EBR.
Thank you so much. That's all I wanted to make sure that I shared, and the other is, you know, if it were up to me, and this is what I was trying to get at, Mr. Lewis and Mr. Martin, anybody else on the board, if we want all the schools to be serviced, which I definitely want every school to be serviced, and Mr. Joffreyon and Mr. Cole is saying that the money is available, why not service them all? I'm just saying. Why not service them all? I mean, hey.
Well, I just want to be clear on that. When we met with Kids Orchestra earlier this week and we talked about the capacity in terms of provide the services for the district, we spoke about 15 schools was the capacity that Kids Orchestra could provide the service.
My apologies. Let me correct myself. All of the schools that are mentioned in region, in the Option 1, which are nine regions, you know? If that is the case, if we have $500,000 and we can support 80 teachers to teach in an after-school program, and we want at least a sample of all of our kids to participate, the sample that the parents allow to participate, why not do it? What are we arguing over? I'm just asking. Thank you. Mr. Godey.
You covered some of my points. Thank you. Mr. Joffreyon, a quick question. You know, we talk about music education, and I've gotten a sense that some people think that the only music education we have is done through Kids Orchestra. Can you just take a little bit of my time and talk about what do we offer as a district for music education? And how does that, how does Kids Orchestra complement that of what we offer? Because we do offer a lot of music education within the district.
We do. We have 40-plus elementary schools. Out of those schools, maybe 38 of those schools have music programs. Those programs consist of general music, some are instrumental music, and some are vocal. This gives those kids the opportunity to have additional time in a music form, particularly when we do general music in education, in elementary education, they get exploratory services in every type of music form you can think of. This is more specialized, that will give them the opportunity to truly get to instruments. So when we do our theater patterns, when we move to middle and high school, that's how we get a lot of our players because of that.
I just wanted everyone to be clear, particularly the public, is that we don't rely on Kids Orchestra to provide all of the music education. They are an adjunct on top of what we already provide, and that just because you're not in Kids Orchestra, it doesn't mean you're not getting any music education. Now, I fully appreciate what Kids Orchestra is doing, I'm not trying to talk that, but it just sort of, the sense came out of, it's either Kids Orchestra or nothing.
Right.
And we are already covering a broad base of all of our elementary schools with our own internal music teachers, which it sounded like some members of the public thought, we didn't have music teachers, but we do. And I know we did, so I just wanted to get that cleared up, that this is an add-on on top of not the only meal at the buffet.
We have every school in the district, and I'm proud to say that we have every school with a art program, with at least one art program at their school. Only one I'm working on is South Downs.
Thank you.
Don't go nowhere, Mr. Joffreyon.
Okay. Mr. Lewis.
Capital Middle has arts, music?
Yes, they do.
How long have they've had their program there?
Since I've been in this position, I know for sure, three years.
Okay. I asked the state monitor 12 years ago, why didn't we have it? She couldn't answer me, but I knew why we didn't have it. I don't want to open that can of worms. What about Capital Elementary? Do they have music?
Yes, they do have, either Capital has music because we have eight forms. They used to have music. I don't know which art form off the top of my head, but I know they have a art, I think it's visual art, but they do want dance, and they ask me that every year, but I can't give it because they don't have the allotment of.
Does Jefferson Terrace have it?
Jefferson Terrace has, they have music. And plus, they have a band program in middle school.
Okay. I'm asking these questions because, and I'm going to repeat myself, we've got to start addressing the complexities of our subgroups in our schools. So if we add Jefferson Terrace, that's going to be an add-on, that's going to be additional? What about Clayborne?
Clayborne has a wonderful choir teacher this year. This would be his first year there. As well as visual arts.
Villa Del Ray?
Villa Del Ray has a little bit of everything because it is a magnet school and it has a creative arts department, and I know for sure it has music, and the principal is very enthusiastically happy about them getting Kids Orchestra, and they have visual art.
Okay. Now, there's three schools on this list in District 5. BR Flame is an A, DuFrock, that's a C, Westdale Heights Academic Magnet is an A. Do they not have music in those schools already?
Yes, they do.
But we're going to put Kid Orchestra in there as a additional?
Additional. They have been, since the inception, I think all three of those schools just about have been a part of that program. Now, a lot of those kids that attend those schools, they don't get the assistance that some of the kids do. A lot of those kids' parents pay full price or close to full price for them to get those services. Those kids who get the Kids Orchestra assistance are those parents and children who just can't afford it.
We got a, this is a complex situation. It really is. And most of the schools that we're talking about, you're educating African-American And we generally learn by doing. We express ourselves, we like music, we dance.
Yes, we do. Research shows children who have the opportunity to have the arts.
Okay, so if you go, you know, you go and you look at the ELA scores, the math scores and the science scores. If you've got vibrant programs in the arts, dance, theater, drama, you should see an increase in the ELA, the math, and the science. So I think we need to line this stuff up and stop just saying, oh, this looks good over here, this looks good over there. Let's put some, let's have some real meaning behind how we spend our money. And you're going to hear me say it again, you're going to hear me say it 100 more times before the night's over with, until we start addressing the real issues of how we're not addressing our subgroups, even in our high-performing schools. We have issues with our subgroups, be it English language learners, economically disadvantaged, black, African-American, you name it. We still have issues in those subgroups. And until we start addressing those, we're just going to be, again, the same old EBR. What are we going to do to become a progressive school system? And art, and music, and dance, and all that's a part of it.
It is.
And to Ms. Nyman, a part of, why it was taken away from schools, that was a part of the attack on public education, thank you, Ronald Reagan.
Coach?
Thank, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Mr. Rust.
Thank you. I really appreciate the conversation we're having. I also want to point out, we have at least 11 more items to vote on tonight, so I would ask Madam President to strictly enforce rules of order. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much. Okay, seeing no further board comment at this time, we will now entertain a vote, and if you will restate the motion for the record, please.
Amendment to the motion to approve a professional service contract, Option 2, as reflected in the board backup between the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board and Kids Orchestra in the amount of $310,000 to provide services for Kids Orchestra after-school program for '24, '25, with the addition of a request to Kids Orchestra to present a proposal at a special meeting prior to the September Committee of the Whole, expanding Option 1 to add additional schools. Option One to add additional schools.
Thank you. We will entertain a vote.
The motion carries.
Thank you. All right. Before we proceed forward, thank you so much, Mr. Russ, for that reminder. I think that if we had a parliamentarian, I would name Mr. Russ as the parliamentarian. Yes, so thank you once again. So for our board, just a friendly reminder, number one, if y'all didn't know, is hot, okay? Number two, I would say, in a class, I would say that we would want to limit our comments, so I'm going to even say that in this vein as well. So reminder, once again, board members, that our comments are limited, thank you, to three minutes, and public comment to one minute, so that way we can, number one, move quickly through the agenda, number two, so that way we can, you know, not exert so much energy. And so with that in mind as well, I want to ask, if there is no objection, if we can switch up our order just a little bit more, to take Items I-2 and I-3 at this time, immediately followed by G-1. If there is no objection, if we can take Items I-2?
I object, because we have people in the audience waiting on these other contracts.
Okay, so if that is the case, then we will continue then. Thank you so much.
Point of information.
Yes.
Just because we need six votes on the millage, Ms. Duer, you're not going to be here for the whole rest of the evening, correct? That, Mr. Godin, is why we'd hope to take that up, so that while she's here, because we need six votes for that millage.
Just for that one thing, I, yeah, we can leave that.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Okay.
So let us go ahead and take I-2, Resolution, Adjusted Millage Rates, Consideration and Adoption of the Resolution, of the Resolution to Adjust Millage Rates for the Tax Year 2024. And Mr. Shamblin, Ms. Armond, I am to read this document. Okay, all right, so this is Resolution Number Two, be it resolved by the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board taxing District of the Parish of East Baton Rouge, Louisiana, in a public meeting held on August 15, 2024, which meeting was conducted in accordance with the Open Meetings Law and the additional requirements of Article Seven, Section 23(c) of the Louisiana Constitution and RS 471705b, that the taxing district voted to increase the millage rate, but not in excess of the prior year's maximum rate, on all taxable property shown on the official assessment roll for the year 2024, and when collected, the revenues from said taxes shall be used only for the specific purposes for which said taxes have been levied. Said millage rates are, Alphabet A, General Fund, Constitution Tax, adjusted rate 4.95 mills, 2024 levy 5.25 mills. For General Fund, Special Maintenance Tax, authorized through 2026 roll, adjusted rate 0.98 mills, 2024 levy 1.0 mills. Special Tax, Additional Aid to Public Schools, authorized through 2033 roll, adjusted rate 6.17 mills, 2024 levy 6.50 mills. Special Tax, Additional Teachers, authorized through 2034 roll, adjusted rate 2.62 mills, 2024 levy 2.78 mills. Special Tax, Employee Salaries and Benefits, authorized through 2034 roll, adjusted rate 1.75 mills, 2024 levy 1.86 mills. Special Tax, Employee Salaries and Benefits, authorized through 2028 roll, adjusted rate 6.73 mills, 2024 levy 7.14 mills. Special Tax, Replacing Reduced State and Local Receipts, authorized through 2027 roll, adjusted rate 4.69 mills, 2024 levy 4.98 mills. Special Tax, Employee Salaries and Benefits, authorized through 2026 roll, adjusted rate 5.64 mills, 2024 levy 5.99 mills. Special Tax, Employee Salaries and Benefits, authorized through 2023 roll, adjusted rate 6.82 mills, 2024 levy 7.19 mills. For a total of adjusted rate, 4.35 mills, total of 2024 levy, 42.73 mills. For ADAPP, well, let's continue, that's what that is, okay? Special Tax Support, ADAPP, authorized through 2026, 0.68 mills, 2024 levy 7.0.72 mills, correction. Further, it be resolved that the assessor of the Parish of East Baton Rouge shall extend upon the assessment roll for the year 2024, the taxes herein levied, and the tax collector of said parish shall collect and remit the same to said taxing authority in accordance with law. The foregoing resolution was read in full, the roll was called on the adoption thereof, and the resolution was adopted by no less than two-thirds of the total membership of the taxing authority voting in favor, as required by Article Seven, Section 23(c) of the Louisiana Constitution and RS 471705b. The votes, okay, at this point, all right? So is there a motion?
You've got to keep.
Is it?
You've got to. Not for one, just for two, right?
This is, okay. So then, what do we need to do at this point? You all, I do apologize.
But you need to get Resolution Two.
Oh, so it has to be a roll call vote. Oh, we're on this item.
So.
Okay, so you read Item Three instead of Two, the resolution?
Okay.
So this one has to be a roll call vote.
Okay, and so do I need to read the information from the agenda as well? Okay, so correction. What I read was I-2, and picked up Resolution Number Two, but this is actually I-3, which correlates with Resolution Number Two, correct? Okay, so the agenda item reads, this is Item I-3, Resolution, Roll Forward Millage, A Consideration and Adoption of a Resolution to Set For the Adjusted Millage Rates After Reassessment and Roll Forward the Millage to Rates Not to Exceed the Prior Year's Maximum Millage for the Tax Year 2024, and this particular item requires a roll call vote. We will now have a motion, yes?
Yeah, I move that we adopt the resolution.
Okay, it has been moved by Mr. Martin. Is there a second? It's been seconded by Mr. Lewis. Comments from the board at this time? And this is on Item I-3, which is Resolution Number Two. Mr. Blue.
Yeah, just real quick, I'm going to be voting for the resolution, and like I had stated earlier, these are for recurring cost and not for a fixed project, so I'm going to vote to keep the rate at the vote, at the rate the voter has approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Martin?
I also support it, obviously, and I just wanted to note that we are not raising the millage. The rate is staying exactly the same. We're simply not reducing it to keep the amount of money coming in the same, so nobody's raising any millage rates here. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further comments from the board, we will now turn to comments from the public at this time. Ms. Matthews.
There we go. Someone was talking about people who have difficulty buying groceries with the property taxes and things like that during this time. It's teachers, it's parish, it's clerks, it's secretaries, and guess what helps pays our salary, this tax. So please do approve to roll it forward, because this will continue to pay our salaries, so absolutely vote for it, and we definitely would appreciate it, so that we can continue having a salary. Thank you so very much for supporting the employees of East Baton Rouge Parish School System.
Thank you. Ms. Parkerson, and then Ms. Nyman.
Good evening, District One, Ursula Parkerson. Superintendent Cole, I'm still here for that meeting, whenever you're ready. Sorry. I just wanted to, I guess, sort of reiterate what Storm said. I have been here for reduction in force letters, and I have gotten the letters that said, I don't think we have a job for you next year, but good luck. Y'all just gained a lot of goodwill from teachers by giving us a stellar administration. Please don't lose it by now making us force a possible reduction in force if we don't have the funds to cover teacher salaries. And the other thing I would say is, this millage does go for, like, building maintenance, right? I mean, if our buildings are already very aging, very old and aging, and I know that my own personal school is having issues, y'all should see the amount of people who are on social media complaining about the no air conditioning. If we can't fix it with already the budget we have, then what are we going to do with $12 million less? Like, we need this money. These kids are at school, sweating and nosebleeds and everything else. Sorry.
Ms. Nyman.
Good evening, Tanya Nyman. I hate to use my 60 seconds on this, but I'm a bit confused, because the agenda item is I-2 is the Resolution for Adjusted Millage Rates, which just guarantees, which would essentially include that $12.9 million cut, because it won't roll forward. And then there's I-3, which is the Resolution Roll Forward Millage, and I think that's on top, first you have to pass that adjusted millage, and then we can discuss the roll forward millage, and so I'm just a bit confused. Either way, I'm in for both.
Okay, thank you.
But I want my 20 seconds. I just want to know what I'm talking on. So if we have to, I hope it's a no-brainer that we pass the one where we at least maintain the property tax millages in existence, because you would be eliminating the entire budget if you don't just pass the adjusted rate millage. The roll forward, of course, should be, again, the narrative around this fact, calling it a roll forward is Orwellian. It is not an accurate characterization of what's going on, and I'll come back when we go into that second resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Shamblin.
Yeah, President Powell spoke with Ms. Lopez to assure that we do this the right way. She's suggesting that you move to the first.
Okay.
Resolution, and read it into the record, pass it first, then move to the second.
Okay, all right, so we can, we can just do that, or do I need to?
I would ask if there's no objection from any board members, that you table this item, withdraw the motion, and then move to that item and read it into the record.
I'll withdraw the motion.
Okay, thank you. All right, so then, thank you so much. Let's go to I-2, Resolution, Adjusted Millage Rates, Consideration and Adoption of the Resolution to Adjust Millage Rates for the Tax Year 2024. I will now read Resolution Number One. Here we go. Be it resolved by the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board taxing District of the Parish of East Baton Rouge, Louisiana, in a public meeting held on August 15, 2024, which meeting was conducted in accordance with the Open Meetings Law and the additional requirements of Article Seven, Section 23(c) of the Louisiana Constitution and RS 471705b, that the following adjusted millage rates be, and they are hereby levied upon the dollar of the assessed valuation of all property subject to ad valorem taxation within said parish for the year 2024, for the purpose of raising revenue. General Fund, Constitutional Tax, Millage, 4.95 mills. Special Maintenance Tax, authorized through 2026 roll, 0.98 mills. Special Tax, Additional Aid to Public Schools, authorized through 2033 roll, 6.17 mills. Special Tax, Additional Teachers, authorized through 2034 roll, 2.62 mills. Special Tax, Employee Salaries and Benefits, authorized through 2034 roll, 1.75 mills. Special Tax, Employee Salaries and Benefits, authorized through 2028 roll, 6.73 mills. Special Tax, Replacing Reduced State and Local Receipts, authorized through 2027 roll, 4.69 mills. Special Tax, Employee Salaries and Benefits, authorized through 2026 roll, 5.64 mills. Special Tax, Employee Salaries and Benefits, authorized through 2033 roll, 6.82 mills, for a total of 40.35 mills. Alphabet B, for ADAPP, Special Tax Support, ADAPP, authorized through 2026, 0.68 mills, totaling 41.03 mills. Be it further resolved that the assessor of the Parish of East Baton Rouge shall extend upon the assessment roll for the year 2024, the taxes herein levied, and the tax collector of said parish shall collect and remit the same to said taxing authority in accordance with law. The foregoing resolution was read in full, the roll was, will be called on the adoption thereof. Is there a motion?
I move that we adopt the resolution.
It has been moved by Mr. Martin. Is there a second? It has been seconded by Mr. Russ. Comments from the board at this time? Okay, seeing none, we will now turn to comments from the public. Ms. Nyman.
Take two, in 60 seconds or less. Yes, I wholeheartedly support this resolution, and I'm assuming all of you do as well, but I just want to sort of begin to demystify the narrative around this. Just because y'all adopt this reduced millage doesn't mean that every tax property owner is not going to see an increase in their bill, because y'all don't control the valuations of properties. That is totally within the control of the assessor, and so it is misleading to suggest to your constituents that by adopting this, they are automatically going to see a reduction in their tax bill. It's actually going to be uneven. Some people are going to see a reduction in their tax bill, because their property values remain flat, and y'all are reducing the millage. Some people are still going to see an increase, because even though you're reducing the millage, the increase on their property established by the assessor's office still went up so much that it's going to increase their property tax bill. And so it's really important. People do not understand what's going on here, and it is unnecessarily hurting our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nyman. Seeing no further comment from the public at this time. Okay, Dr. Finney? Make sure you turn in your card.
I will. I turn in my cards based on the agenda as it was presented. Because I'm a teacher, I have a handout. For your convenience, I cut and pasted from the Secretary of State's website the ballot language. So the voters approved particular millages, not particular tax amounts. So this is a necessary step, and to save my time, I will just encourage you to vote for this quickly and unanimously, and then proceed to roll forward, and I'll have more to say about that in a moment. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further public comment at this time, we will now return to comments from the board. Seeing none, we will entertain a vote, and this is on Agenda Item I-2, which is Resolution Number One.
Please vote.
Can we get roll calls since we can't see it?
It's supposed to be a roll call.
No, the next one is supposed to be. The motion carries.
All right, so, Mr. Shamlin, as we get to item I three, do I read resolution two?
I would reread it into the record, yes.
Thank you, sir. Resolution two is, okay. So once again, I three, resolution, roll forward millage, consideration and adoption of a resolution to set forth the adjusted millage rates after reassessment and roll forward the millage to rates not to exceed the prior year's maximum millage for the tax year 2024. And this requires a roll call vote. Resolution number two, be it resolved by the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board, taxing district of the parish of East Baton Rouge, Louisiana, in a public meeting held on August 15, 2024, which meeting was conducted in accordance with the open meetings law and the additional requirements of Article seven, section 23(c) of the Louisiana Constitution and RS 471705b, that the taxing district voted to increase the millage rates, but not in excess of the prior year's maximum rates on all taxable property shown on the official assessment roll for the year 2024. And when collected, the revenues from said taxes shall be used only for the specific purposes for which said taxes have been levied. Said millage rates are constitutional tax, adjusted rate, 4.95 mils, 2024 levy, 5.25 mils. Special maintenance tax, authorized through 2026 roll, adjusted rate, 0.98 mils, 2024 levy, 1.04 mils. Special tax, additional aid to public schools, authorized through 2033 roll, adjusted rate, 6.17 mils, 2024 levy, 6.50 mils. Special tax, additional teachers, authorized through 2034 roll, adjusted rate, 2.62 mils, 2024 levy, 2.78 mils. Special tax, employee salaries and benefits, authorized through 2034 roll, adjusted rate, 1.75 mils, 2024 levy, 1.86 mils. Special tax, employee salaries and benefits, authorized through 2028 roll, adjusted rate, 6.73 mils, 2024 levy, 7.14 mils. Special tax, replacing reduced state and local receipts, authorized through 2027 roll, adjusted rate, 4.69 mils, 2024 levy, 4.98 mils. Special tax, employee salaries and benefits, authorized through 2026 roll, adjusted rate, 5.64 mils, 2024 levy, 5.99 mils. Special tax, employee salaries and benefits, authorized through 2033 roll, adjusted rate, 6.82 mils, 2024 levy, 7.19 mils, for a total adjusted rate of 40.35 mils and for a total 2024 levy of 42.73 mils. For ADAPP, special tax, support ADAPP, authorized through 2026, 0.68 mils, 2024 levy, let me show I read that correctly, 2024 levy, 0.72 mils, for a total of 41.03 mils and 2024 levy for a total of 43.45 mils. Further, it be resolved that the assessor of the parish of East Baton Rouge shall extend upon the assessment roll for the year 2024 the taxes herein levied and the tax collector of said parish shall collect and remit the same to said taxing authority in accordance with the law. The foregoing resolution was read in full. The roll will be called for the adoption thereof. Is there a motion?
I move that we adopt the resolution.
It has been moved by Mr. Martin. Is there a second? It's been seconded by Mr. Lewis. Comments from the board at this time? Okay, we will now turn to comments from the public. Ms. McMillan.
Tanya McMillan, parent of a child in East Baton Rouge Parish School System. I'll be honest, I have no idea what y'all are just talking about. But I knew, I do know y'all are talking about tax dollars. All the mils and all that stuff is kind of confusing to, you know, laypersons like myself. But what's not confusing is to understand that we need to be good stewards of these tax dollars. So when, every chance I get, I'm going to remind you guys of the 1.2 million dollars we spent renovating Baton Rouge Flame for our pre-K program because we got that grant, that reimagine grant, and we needed to make those classes accessible for little kids. We just gave those renovated classrooms to Kids Carousel, who pays no rent and no utilities in our buildings. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Finney.
Mr. Russ, I understand you already announced that you were going to vote against this. I hope you'll reconsider because as you can see from the handout, the voters approved a certain millage. My house valuation has gone up. I'm proud to pay more property tax to support public schools. It is entirely appropriate. That is the way property tax works. So if the voters approved a certain millage rate, that is the millage rate that the board should levy. And I would hope that this vote would be unanimous. That 12 and a half million dollars would do a lot to provide not music in most schools and visual art in most schools and dance in some schools, but all of the arts in every school, which should be the bare minimum. Thank you, and I appreciate the fact that many of you will vote in favor of this, hopefully all of you. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Stewart.
Thank you again. I'd like to encourage this board, if I'm not mistaken, I think the law affords you, you, this body, the luxury of voting on the ITEP scenario about making major corporations like ExxonMobil and the others pay more money, even if they don't pay 100% of what they should be paying. I think all of you should encourage them to at least pay something more than what they're paying. It is very evident that not only the East Baton Rouge Parish School System, however, school systems across this United States, they need as much money as possible. So as you are possibly unanimously approving this gesture tonight, or if not unanimously approving it, I think you should have the spinal fortitude, the testicular fortitude and every other fortitude to be able to prompt these mega businesses to pay their fair share.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart.
Thank you, Madam President.
Ms. Nyman.
Tanya Nyman. So very quickly, I wanted to just point out the irony that if you don't vote to approve the roll, I hate calling it a roll forward, to maintain the property tax millage that voters approved during the last elections. The fact is, is that, for example, in that, the example I started with at the beginning, the property associated with a middle income earner would actually see a greater increase in their property taxes than the property associated with an upper income tax, a property owner. And I can show you those numbers if you'd like to see how that works because it is beyond your control. It is the assessor's control that controls the final dollars, right? And so there's that point. And the second one is that I understand property owners are being squeezed. Homeowner insurance is through the roof. And, and then there's also the way in which valuations in this parish are not transparent and there's no uniformity, not only across the parish but within neighborhoods. But the problem is, is that our public schools should not be responsible for fixing that. That is a part of the insurance office, the insurance department, probably a federal issue, and also the assessor's office. I hope you'll change your mind.
Thank you. Seeing no further public comment at this time, we will turn to comments from the board. Okay, seeing none, Mr. Russ.
Thanks, I'll be quick. I'm going to reiterate what I said earlier. We are experiencing record results of inflation in this environment. Renters in this parish pay some of the highest rents per capita in the nation. That is a direct result of inflation and an inflationary environment. We have a choice on whether we want to roll this forward. It is our board's choice. Yes, the voters did agree at a certain millage. They also agreed for that millage at a time when they, their property was assessed at a certain value. We are not responsible for how the assessor conducts those assessments and when, but we are responsible for the money that we're about to ask for out of their pockets at a time when people need it more than ever. People on fixed incomes, people that do not own property, but pay a premium to live in a, in a apartment, in a home, a condo, wherever it is, that are, they are paying a premium because of high property taxes and because of the dozen plus different independent taxing authorities that have no oversight in this parish to coordinate how tax dollars are effectively used. We have tens of millions of dollars in surplus and the fact that we won't spend it has more to do with compliance than the fact that we actually need it. I reject the idea that a failure to roll forward this millage does not support teacher pay. When I was unanimous, along with the rest of this board, in passing a budget that supported teachers and giving them a raise this year, 12 million dollars is 12 million dollars that we have in a slush fund, sitting waiting to be spent. There is not a single metric that a board member could look at and apply to how we measure success in this school board when it comes to how tax dollars are being spent, that any of us can honestly look in the mirror and say that we have done everything in our power to maximize the use of the tax dollars that we oversee. There's nobody here that can look with a straight face and say they have done every single thing in their power to maximize the use of these tax dollars. We have a lot of work to do. We need to put our money where our mouth is. We need to do the hard work of sharpening our pencils and creating a budget that puts more money in front of students, stop reaching into the pockets of our constituents. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further comments from the board, we will now entertain a roll call vote.
District one, Mr. Blue.
Yes.
District three, President Powell Lewis.
Yes.
District four, Ms. Stewart.
Yes.
District five, Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
District six, Mr. Russ.
Nay.
District seven, Mr. Goday.
Yes.
District nine, Vice President Morton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We're now moving to item G three, professional services contract, City Year. My apologies. G three, professional services contract, City Year, consideration of a request for the approval of a professional services contract between the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board and City Year Incorporated in the amount of $650,000 to provide high dose tutoring and family engagement support, strategic alignment, student achievement, funding source, Title I, $450,000, general fund, $200,000. Is there a motion? Okay, it has been moved by Mr. Goday and seconded by Mr. Blue. Comments from the board at this time? Seeing none, we will turn to comments from the public. Dr. Finney.
I would encourage you to ask Mr. Shamlin what the limit is on spending federal dollars without going through competitive procurement. And I thought this was moved for two weeks in order to resolve that, but $450,000 of Title I sounds a lot more than $250,000 of federal money. So I may be wrong. This may be legal, but I don't think it is.
Ms. Powell had to step out. Were there any other public comments on this item? The only card I see is for Dr. Finney. Was there any other public comment item, comment on this item? Okay, then we'll return to comments from the board. Any comments from the board? All right, seeing none, Madam Secretary, let's vote.
Mr. Martin, we've made the correction. Dr. Finney was correct. I had it, not swapped it after the last meeting.
Okay, do I need to reread anything? No, okay. Thank you very much. All right, we use the time for the vote then?
Please vote. The motion carries.
Thank you. Moving next to item four, agreement for services, Center for High School Success, consideration of a request for the approval of an agreement for services contract between the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board and Center for High School Success in the amount of $214,332 to provide training, support and resources, strategic alignment, student achievement, funding source, Essor. Are there any comments from the board? Oh, is there a motion? Thank you very much, Mr. Blue. You move, Mr. Blue moves and who's the second? Mr. Goday seconds. All right, is there any comment from the board? All right, seeing none, we'll turn to comments from the public on item, on item G four, the Center for High School Success. Dr. Finney.
First point, since you don't have the video screens available in this room, I believe you're technically required by open meetings law to either conduct a roll call vote or to have the secretary announce the results of the vote by board member. So I'd appreciate somebody go back and do that for the previous item. I realize it's on the screen that may be visible to the public, but the people are here have just as much a right to see who voted on each item or who abstained. Second, I would encourage you to oppose anything that supports Stand for Children in any form. And third, you're spending a lot of money in general from the general fund without specifics as to which page and line item is being addressed by each of those items and I would encourage you to stop that practice as soon as possible. Thank you. Four seconds to spare.
Thank you. Seeing no further pub, okay. Mr. Stewart.
Thank you. Good evening again. Will someone be kind enough to share with us, what does this organization do for this parish, this school system? Am I allowed to ask?
No, ma'am, no, sir, I do apologize.
Why not? I mean, our tax dollars are paying for something.
Do you want to waste your mon, your minute asking me a question?
How can we find out what this organization does for us?
Is the gentleman in the audience? There he is right behind you, he's raising his hand. And it's, and it is on board docs, that is correct.
Okay. Secondly, with the epitome of respect, if I were in your seat, Superintendent Cole, I would ask this body to stop spending all money until I, I'm, I'm able to intricately assess every contract that is being financed because I looked, looked over one of the meetings intimately and Mr. Lannis, he's not here this evening, he indicated that this board approves contracts sometimes sometimes in duplicity, and y'all don't even know what y'all are buying. So please, ask them to stop spending our money until they do a better job of assessing what they're spending our money.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart.
I'm not being radical, I'm just being real.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Seeing no further public comments at this time, we will now return to board comments. Mr. Gode.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. There's a presentation in board docs that unfortunately can't be rolled through here because Energy decided that they didn't want to provide electricity today. But if you go and look at that presentation, there's a detailed presentation on what are the results that have been obtained by this group and how they're doing it. Now, they won't take full credit for everything, because it's a culmination of a lot of things. But let me just give a few brief numbers. In 2021, our ninth grade success rate, which is, if I remember correctly, is defined as on course of graduation with no more than one F. I got it right. Our, and also recognizing that ninth grade success is the single biggest factor in determining graduation rates. So we have been at this for three years now, so next year will be the year where we should start seeing some impact on graduation rates. Year 2021, it was 59%. Year 21, '22, it was 71%. Year 22, '23, it's 82%. And we don't have '23, '24 yet, but we'll be getting that soon, and I assume it's going up. So I think this program has been very successful. It has been money wisely spent. The data is here to show it. There is follow-up on that data. My only question to you, Mr. Cole, is there a couple of disturbing, if you go down into the data, past just the district measures? If I look at Scottlinville Magnet High School, is not improving. There was another school here that had plateaued off, but Broadmoor, for instance, went from 31% to 70%. McKinley Senior High is only going from 45% to 66%. Scottlinville is a real question mark. Why are they so low as compared to the other schools? Tara went from 33% to 90%, which is outstanding. So we need to be looking, I think this is a very successful program, I strongly support it, but we also need to be looking at why some schools are lagging behind where other schools are making tremendous gains. So I'm totally in favor of this, and I want to vote for it, but also want to really get a push on why some schools are lagging behind. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Thank you very much. I also support this program tonight. I had a lot of questions about it last year. I've seen firsthand and talked with the principal at Tara about how successful this program has been for them. Of course, they were recognized as the best-performing high school under this program in the country, so we're very excited about that. I think when properly implemented, it really can help boost graduation rates. That said, Superintendent Cole, I think that we want to, as we're doing with all of our contracts, we want to, one, make sure we have kind of standardized metrics that we use, that we're consistently using this nice, and I appreciate the presentation that provides a lot of data from the vendor. I think we want to make sure, for all these kind of contracts, that we're vetting that, you know, well in advance of the actual meeting to make sure that's doing it. And I do also want to take the next year to explore, which, an idea which has come up in several things that we've discussed, are the principles of underlying this program to boost ninth grade success. Are they really inherent in some proprietary or secret sauce that this vendor has? Or there's things that, or is this perhaps a program that we need this vendor to help us get going in a particular school and then hand it off perhaps once the culture of the school has changed, once the folks at that school have really bought into that program? Maybe we don't need to pay for it at that school anymore, and we can use those funds to invest more in Scottlinville or what have you so that they can do it. So I'd encourage us to work with that, and I see the vendor nodding his head back there, so that's great. Thank you.
Thank you. I've entered into the queue, and if you could come forward, please. Mr. Eric. Thank you so much for being here.
You're welcome.
My question was very similar to Mr. Gode. You already know that, of course, the schools on the north side are very near and dear to my heart.
Absolutely.
And I know that in the past, we've had conversations about Scottlinville specifically. Will you just share with us what may be the dilemma or what might be the issue there? I know we've talked about it briefly before.
So, thank you. I'm Eric Nelson with the Center for High School Success. I've been lucky enough to present to y'all in the past, and we have celebrated some great success. As said, Mr. Hamon and Tara, the top school in the country of 170 schools we serve. As you saw in your notes, this will directly impact, you'll have 1,000-plus more graduates just in the three years that we've been partnering with you. And to your point, we partner closely with the James Smith and the Graduation Excellence Department when we do this work together. It, as a former principal myself, it's a hard, hard job. And so I do know there's nuances to every school and why the data is the way that Mr. Gode and you all talked about. Our job, and we need to do a better job, and this is our next step for this year, is to even pour more time into the schools like Scottlinville that we're not seeing the results that we'd like to. As you can see in the report, too, we've committed to being at every school every week, and some of those schools even more. And that's personally one-on-one with a former principal, with people that have done the job to take your existing resources and put it together to enhance ninth graders. So it's not something we make you buy, it's doing, pulling together the things you already have. And our hope is to do exactly what you said, Mr. Martin, is that we would be out of business soon after we can do that. And in fact, if you look at the contract, there's no charge for Tara this year because they elevated to that status. And in fact, we bring people in from across the country to learn from Mr. Hamon and their staff as to what they're doing. And Ms. Powell Lewis, you stopped by and saw us in the spring when we did that.
Thank you. Mr. Lewis.
For a lot of people who may not know this or may not understand this, and I'm gonna touch on something that Mr. Martin said about what they're doing, what high schools, Eric's, what his people are doing. A lot of you guys in this room might not realize it, but at one time, EBR is where people came to learn how to have successful high schools, elementary schools, and middle We kind of lost that vibe. 15, 20 years ago, this is where people wanted to come, to find out how to produce great teachers and great students, knowing that the two go together. So what we need to do is fix ourselves. We know what the issues are. We just need to have the tough conversations and get back to educating the children in We don't need a magic bullet. We don't need a software, we don't need a magic bullet, we don't need a program, we just need to get back to where we used to be before, for whatever reason, we became in up and forgot how to educate. You ask any teacher with 20, 25 years more of experience in this district, and they will tell you, guys, it was PD all the time. We were training teachers, we were training principals. We've got to get back to that. That's what's going to make us a world-class school district. So, you know, let's not forget where we came from, but at the same time, let's not forget how we ended up where we are. It's kind of like we forgot our way, and we need to get it back.
Thank you. Seeing no further comments from the board, we will now entertain a vote, and we have heard from you, Dr. Finney, Ms. Matthews. If there is no objection, we will proceed forward with roll call votes.
District one, Mr. Blue.
Yes.
District three, President Powell Lewis.
Yes.
District four, Ms. Stewart.
Yes.
District five, Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
District six, Mr. Russ.
Yes.
District seven, Mr. Gode.
Yes.
District nine, Vice President Morton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item G5, memorandum of understanding, 100 Black Men of Metro Baton Rouge, LTD, consideration of a request for the approval of a memorandum of understanding, MOU, between the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board and 100 Black Men of Metro Baton Rouge, LTD, in the amount of $100,000 to provide financial literacy, strategic alignment, student achievement, funding source, general fund. Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we table this to a date uncertain. For one thing, Mr. Lannis is not here, and there needs to be more information.
Okay, so it has been moved that this item be tabled to a date uncertain, seconded by Mr. Martin. Motion made by Mr. Lewis, seconded by Mr. Martin. Comments from the board at this time? Okay, seeing none, we will now turn to comments from the public. Dr. Finney.
I support the motion to defer this, but just to be clear, it would be entirely inappropriate for Mr. Lannis to comment on this in any way, given that in his state job, he's the executive director of the organization. So while he remains on the board, he should completely recuse himself from any discussion or vote on this item. I would hope he would vote it down eventually, but I think they're referring it until you get more information is entirely appropriate, and thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further comments. Okay, G4. Oh, Ms. Stewart, you attempted to do G5. Okay, gotcha.
Well, whatever this item is, Madam President.
One minute.
Thank you. This topic, is this topic not presented and discussed and taught in the general curriculum? Why do we need an outside group to reinforce this and what have you? Might any board member share? Can I find information, or the general public find information on this topic, on board doc or in the state curriculum? The strands and benchmarks, and its financial literacy, isn't this a part of the general curriculum already? I'm asking. So why do we need to spend $100,000 on an external group? We seem to just be doling out contracts like we. Hell, let me present a contract to the board. I've been trying to employ some type of leadership component for years. I'll write a proposal, and y'all give me $100,000 to present some type of leadership stuff within the school system, because God knows is breathlessly and desperately needed among our students.
Seeing no further comments from the public, we will now return to comments from the board at this time. Okay, Mr. Celestine. Okay, Ms. Dawson.
All right, good evening. So I did want to just touch on this. With junior achievement, we can kind of share with you a little background on that. The financial literacy mandate is statewide now, and it's required, and there are many standards that it has to have, the objectives to be able to make sure that the curriculum is full and whole, and it's required for two semesters. So, you know, I think that there are many vendors that you all are looking at and kind of vetting, so there is a reason for it. And I'm excited that the high school students have to go through it. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further public comment at this time, we will now return to comments from the board. Okay, and so the motion is to table this item until a date uncertain? Okay, all right, with that in mind, we will now entertain a roll call vote.
District one, Mr. Blue.
Yes.
District three, President Powell Lewis.
Yes.
District four, Ms. Stewart.
Yes.
District five, Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
District six, Mr. Russ.
Yes.
District seven, Mr. Gode.
Yes.
District nine, Vice President Morton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item G6, contract amendment, HES, or HES, discussion and consideration of the approval of a request from HES Facilities Management of a contractual increase of $960,000 based on the cost of living adjustment of 4% to begin in the school year 2024, 2025. Is there a motion?
Madam President, given that it was Mr. Lannis who particularly requested this item be added, and he's not available, I would move to table this item to a date uncertain.
Okay, it has been moved that we table this item to a date uncertain. Is there a second? It has been seconded by Mr. Russ. Comments from the board at this time? Seeing none, we will turn to comments from the public. Immediately after Dr. Finney, Ms. Matthews.
Thank you. HES negotiated a contract. If they can't afford to keep the schools in tip-top shape for the money they proposed, you should find a different vendor.
Thank you, Ms. Matthews.
First, I appreciate Patrick. I'm not sure that he sleeps. However, y'all can get rid of the rest of HES. None of the janitors at my school ever got that $15 an hour. You remember when you said you were going to check? They did not get it, which is what the last increase was supposed to be for, so I'm not sure who's getting this cost of living increase. Also, only about eight of the schools were actually 100% finished when school started, so like, there's just like this little rush job that finished a lot of them to make them look like they were kind of finished. They're not finished. So again, keep Patrick, because like, he's the bomb, but get rid of the rest of the contract. Thank you.
Are they talking about you, Mr. Martin?
Someone else.
Ms. Stewart.
Good evening again. I saw a documentary where I think in Japan, Japan, they, the students care for their campuses in that country, and the pride that exists within those students is phenomenal. So I think we should possibly look into something of that magnitude. When I was in the classroom here, and everywhere, I used to get my students to clean the room, and the custodians would, they would always leave me a nice little note saying, "We didn't have to do anything in your classroom." You'd be surprised the type of pride that it instills in these students when they're motivated. That's part of the leadership component that I'm talking about, to do these kinds of things. And it would certainly probably eliminate having to spend millions of dollars in custodial funds if every classroom teacher would motivate, and the system would prompt the students to motivate and keep their, just their individual classrooms clean.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart.
Certainly.
Seeing no further comments, Ms. McMillan.
I'm sorry.
And then Ms. Johnson.
I know that everybody wants to get out of here because it's hot, but I did just want to remind you guys that when they came before us last time for the increase, we talked about them passing that increase off to the subcontractors or to the employees of the subcontractors. And so here we are again, they're asking for a million dollars more, and we have to hold people accountable. We say a lot of things at these board meetings, but where is the follow-up? If they did not pass that increase on to their people, we can't give them no more money. As long as Flame has glass on the playground, we can't give them no more money. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Ms. Johnson.
Valencia Johnson, President of the East Baton Rouge Parish Association of Educators. I think you should look into other options for janitorial service, perhaps bring it back under the district, anything other than HES. The consensus around the district is Airmark was better and Airmark was terrible. So what are we doing? We're going to give them some more money to not do what they're supposed to do. And so they got a new contract in Central. They can't handle the job that we have in East Baton Rouge Parish. Okay? We have classrooms that trash hadn't been changed in a week. Teachers are taking out their own trash, sweeping their own floors. in a week. Teachers are taking out their own trash, sweeping their own floors. Cleaning is not being done, and we are in this, we're just starting, we are a week into the schools, school year. No, we can't do HES. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Seeing no further comments from the public, we will now return to comments from the board. Mr. Martin.
Thank you. Super Nicole, I would urge you to look very carefully at putting this contract out to bid again very soon. I think that what we, we discussed this a lot over the last year and a half, and my opinion certainly, at the end of a lot of meetings, discussions with staff, with HES, with stakeholders, is that, is that we just, we didn't think through the contract well enough going into it. We don't have the right kind of KPIs and metrics in there to properly evaluate that. We've had a lot of disputes over whether, how well they're performing, and whether the, you know, teachers are having empty trash cans that they shouldn't have to do, and things like that. And I think that a lot of that could be reformed if we spent some more time. Maybe we got a professional to help us look at best practices. This is a very large contract. It's probably our largest single contract that we have, and it's worth expending the resources necessary to get it right this time. But I think we need to start that effort very, very soon so that it will be, we can have something done properly and in place for, you know, next school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that the, to just comment on some of the things that, I guess, as it relates to HES, I actually personally sat down with some of the representatives from HES to get some more information and more insight. And so as was stated earlier that we did approve to give HES additional funding, under the impression that it was going to raise all of those workers' minimum salary to the fifteen dollar salary rate per hour. And yet, what actually happened with the funding that we approved actually was given to the daytime workers of HES that work in the schools throughout the day. And the difference that I found out was that those evening workers, those workers that are part of the small businesses in the fair share program, those are the workers that actually clean the classrooms, the building, and the school facilities. And so as a result, those are the workers, and I can attest to some statements that were made about the classrooms and facilities not being cleaned properly. That is true. I took the initiative this summer to go to some of my schools and found out about some of them not being cleaned properly. And that's what I found out. And initially, of course, as I indicated to some of my colleagues, I was in agreement with giving HES the additional monies to assure that those evening workers were paid the fifteen dollar minimum, you know, minimum salary because we can't keep those workers. That's why the classrooms aren't clean. That's why the buildings aren't clean, because we can't keep them because of the salary rate. There are a lot of different vendors and businesses locally in Baton Rouge that are starting hourly wages at seventeen, sixteen, nineteen dollars an hour. So to come and work for an entity for less than ten dollars, or about nine dollars and some change, is the reason why we can't keep the workers. And so I was initially in agreement to giving them the increase so that those evening workers that actually do the cleaning get the monies, but as my colleague, Mr. Martin, said, with also in addition caveat of looking for another vendor. And so I didn't want to negate those workers from getting those monies because of how HES handled the contract with giving the funding to their workers, which were the daytime workers. And so I say that to say, even if we don't, we won't have any workers to clean the classrooms in the evenings and at night. So I just want to let my colleagues know that I do agree with trying to identify other sources, but if we do not approve and give them this, we won't have any workers, and we still won't have clean schools. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Russ.
Thank you. I do support moving this forward to another date. I think it needs some more work. I want to point out that as far back as April, I've been asking for a presentation on the status of this contract, and it was not brought to this board. Further to Ms. Stewart's point, you know, we approved a cost of living increase for salaries for these workers, and I've been asking over and over since last year, how do we ensure that that happened? Where is the transparency? I need HES to be a good partner and come forth and show us that they did what they said they're going to do. The only thing of substance that we've received as awards since then was a, was a letter that said, "Yeah, we did it." And that's, I don't think that's going to cut it. I don't look to be antagonistic to our vendors, but I don't think this has been the type of relationship that we need to have with our biggest vendor. And I agree that we need to put this contract out to bid with different contract terms, learning from the experience that we've had working with, with H E S. I'm empathetic that we had a partner with Airmark for like two decades, and so moving to a different partner can be difficult. And so I think there's a little bit of that. I also think that HES underbid this project, and it is their responsibility, not the school boards, to make sure that they pay their workers the rate that they need to be paid. I don't agree that it's, it falls on us to give them more money. Their business. It's their job to pay their people what they're supposed to be paying them. If they can't hire good people because they're not paying enough, that, welcome to capitalism. That is the United States of America. You better go pay them what they, they need to be paid so that you can have good people. It's not our problem to solve. It's not the taxpayers' problem to solve. So I support pushing this forward. We need to dig into this and hear more. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Goday.
Thank you. I guess on my eight, nine years now on the board, the one thing you can always bet on is there are going to be complaints about the janitorial services at the schools. It is always going to happen. I was there throughout the whole time with Airmark and renegotiating that first contract, and then the bid on this one. It is going to happen. And a couple of things. One is, I don't accept the fact that they're horrible completely, because I go out and talk to some principals, and I got some of my schools that said they're doing a good job. Okay? Secondly, someone used to say, "In God I trust, but I want data for everything else." If you're having all these issues, be turning in work orders, be turning in things to your principals, doing it, because anecdotal evidence coming up here and go, "I got teachers having to throw out garbage." I can't handle that. I don't know how to do that. Is that one teacher? Is that every teacher in the school? Is that every school? That doesn't move my needle at all. Okay? If you want to do something, turn in the data, turn in the stuff so we can see it on the KPIs. We can't have a KPI if we don't have the data to substantiate it. So if you feel that way about it, hey, it may be totally true. I'm not saying it's not, but I can't take your word for it, and I can't take it anecdotally. Okay? The other thing is, if I remember right, and this is probably a Mr. Shamlin question, the contract with HES, well, two things. I want to go back to one other one real quick. The Knight Cruises, which are our local vendors, are the ones cleaning it. You change out HES, they're still going to be the ones cleaning it. And if they're not cleaning it under HES, they're not going to clean it under the next one. Okay? So that's the same issue we hit with Airmark. We blamed Airmark for the local contractors. We flipped out Airmark. We had the same local contractors, and you have the same issue. Okay? So be careful where the finger gets pointed, because it's probably the local partners that aren't doing their job, and are we working closely with HES to make sure that they do. Because everyone likes to point the big finger at the big contract, the big number, but most of that money ends up going to the local providers. And the local providers are the ones that are doing or not doing the actual cleaning. And then lastly, Mr. Shamlin, if I remember right, the contract with HES is they have the right to come and ask for us for an increase. If we decline the increase, they have the right to cancel the contract with six months' notice?
I believe that's correct.
Okay? So there's a built-in mechanism for all of this in the contract. Okay? If we don't like it, we can turn it down, and HES can cancel the contract in six months. Okay? And so, you know, that's, that's where all of this is. But everyone likes to point the finger at HES, but HES isn't cleaning the rooms at night. Okay? They're responsible for getting that. Huh? Sir, I'm not addressing you.
No, thank you. Not at this time.
It's their job to do it, but just changing is not going to change any, anything like that. So my suggestion is we do the best job we can working with HES, and if we want to get rid of HES, get rid of HES, but it ain't going to change the outcome until we change the local contractors. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further board comment, we will now entertain a vote, and the motion is to table this item to a date uncertain. We will now have a roll call vote at this time.
District one, Mr. Blue.
Yes.
District three, President Paul Lewis.
Yes.
District four, Ms. Stewart.
Yes.
District five, Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
District six, Mr. Russ.
Yes.
District seven, Mr. Goday.
Yes.
District nine, Vice President Martin.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. It is now eight twenty-five, and I would like to ask if there is any way that we can maneuver some items here, possibly to entertain G one, and then go back to G seven, G eight, and then the consent agenda, if there is no objection. Okay, all right. Considering that there is no objection.
Point of personal.
Yes.
Just, just for everyone, if we drag out this thing, I will not be voting for extending past nine o'clock. So let's get on with it, and let's keep our comments germane, and let's, let's move it along. Thank you.
Yes.
Point of information, what items are those? Because the agenda is changing so much. I don't know what items we're talking about.
All right, so G one would be deputy superintendent contract, and then we would go back to G seven, litigation, G eight, litigation, and then the consent agenda, beginning with hourly rate university students.
I just want to point out, we have people in the audience that are waiting for the consent agenda to be worked on. I don't know if anybody plans to remove any of those items for separation, separate vote, but we have a lot of people sitting here in the heat.
Yes, and that's, that's my other question as well, because we have sixteen items on the consent agenda. Mr. Lewis, we'll have to read all sixteen as well before we even get to, before we even get to a discussion. So what is it, what is the pleasure of the board?
Could we do the consent agenda first?
Okay.
What if, if people pull a bunch of them off, then that's going to take a long time.
Too bad.
Can we, if, could we elect to put those items on the end of the agenda?
Okay.
The items that you would like to remove?
So the items that I would like to remove, so that would be...
Anybody that wants to pull something.
Let the consent agenda go, and if any, whoever, whatever gets pulled goes to the end of the, end of the meeting.
That's my suggestion. So we, so we can get some of it resolved.
If I may, Madam President, I would, I would suggest that we do seven and eight, because those are litigation. Those don't take any time at all.
Okay.
And do the consent, then do G one, and then do any items that are pulled off the consent agenda. Does that make sense?
So what I'm hearing is that we will go ahead and entertain G seven, which is litigation, G eight, which is litigation, then the consent agenda, then G one, which is the deputy superintendent contract, and then any items that were pulled from the consent agenda. Okay? All right. Thank you. All right, let us continue then. Item G seven, litigation, consideration of a request for the approval of the recommendation from Gwen Shamlin, General Counsel, East Baton Rouge Parish School Board, in the matter of Michelle Colwell et al. versus East Baton Rouge Parish School System et al., and to provide for related matters. Is there a motion?
I say move.
It has been moved by Mr. Martin. Is there a second? It has been seconded by Mr. Goday. Comments from the board? Seeing none, we will now entertain comments from the public. Seeing none, returning to comments from the board. Roll call vote, please.
District one, Mr. Blue.
Yes.
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 Paul Lewis. Oh, oh, Ms. Stewart.
And yes.
District five, Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
District six, Mr. Russ.
Yes.
Yes.
District seven, Mr. Goday. District nine, Vice President Martin.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item G eight, litigation, consideration of a request for the approval of the recommendation from Gwen Shamlin, General Counsel, East Baton Rouge Parish School Board, in the matter of Henry McKnight versus East Baton Rouge Parish School Board and Dudley Tillman, suit number seven, seven, three, four, three, nine, five, section twenty-four, nineteenth JDC, EBR Parish, and to provide for related matters. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the recommendation.
It has been moved by Mr. Martin and seconded by Ms. Stewart. Comments from the board at this time. Seeing none, we turn to comments from the public. Seeing none, returning to comments from the board. We will entertain a roll call vote.
District one, Mr. Blue.
Yes.
District three, President Paul Lewis.
Yes.
District four, Ms. Stewart.
Yes.
District five, Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
District six, Mr. Russ.
Yes.
Yes.
District seven, Mr. Goday. District nine, Vice President Martin.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right, we will now move to item H, well, alphabet H, consent agenda. Mr. Lewis.
Item H, consent agenda, consent, consent vote. The following items ought to be approved as part of the consent agenda and are considered to be routine and will be enacted, and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussions of items unless a board member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered as an item on a regular agenda or a separate vote preceding the last item on the regularly, regular agenda. Number two, hourly rate university students. Discussion, consideration of a request to approve a maximum hourly rate of twenty dollars an hour for university students seeking professional credentials in the area of, in the areas, areas of employment, working extended day school-based programs. Ms. Suley. Grants early childhood education. Consider, consideration of a request for the approval of the following. Twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five early childhood grants. A, early childhood education fund in the amount of one hundred and fifty-four thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five dollars to increase early childhood seats for children birth to three years of age. Family engagement. Here we go. Family engagement and leadership planning in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars to support strategic planning for early childhood family engagement. C, twenty-four, twenty-five, Louisiana Early Educator Investment Collaborative Grants in the amount of fifty thousand dollars to gather and analyze data from early educators regarding inadequacies, inadequate compensation and benefits in early childhood programs. Strategic alignment, student alignment, Ms. Griffin and Ms. Warren. Louisiana Compliance Questionnaire. Consideration of a request for the approval of the Louisiana Compliance Questionnaire as required for the twenty-three, twenty-four financial audit of the East Baton Rouge Parish School System. Mrs. Lopez. Approval of fiscal agent contract, Capital One. Consideration of a request for the approval of the fiscal agent agreement between the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board and Capital One Bank for a two-year optional extension beginning October first, twenty twenty-four, through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Ms. Lopez. Twenty-four, twenty-five Salary Schedule Amendment, Registered School Nurses. Consideration of a request to amend the twenty-four, twenty-five salary schedule to increase the part-time rate of registered school nurses from eighteen dollars per hour to thirty-five dollars per hour. Strategic alignment, operational excellence, and exemplary customer service. Mrs. Dupree. Memorandum of Understanding, MOU, junior achievement. Consideration of a request for the approval of a memorandum of understanding between the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board and junior achievement of Greater Baton Rouge, in the amount of ninety thousand, five hundred dollars to provide support services for students. Strategic alignment, student achievement, funding source, ESA, Mrs. Williams. Mrs. Williams. Professional Service Contract, Art Councils of Greater Baton Rouge. Consideration of a request for the approval of the following professional services contracts between the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board, Arts Councils of Greater Baton Rouge in the amount of $65,000 to provide professional development and art infusion. Strategic alignment, student achievement, funding source, ESA. Mr. Joffreyon and Ms. Williams. Number nine, Professional Service Contract, Manship Theater. Consideration of a request for the approval of the following professional service contracts between the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board and Douglas Manship Senior Theater Complex Holding Incorporated. Manship Theater in the amount of $43,655 to provide four touring productions for select schools. Strategic alignment, student achievement, funding source, ESA. Mr. Joffreyon and Ms. Williams. Professional Service Contract, English Learners Engage. Consideration for a request for the approval of a professional service contract between the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board and English Learners Engage in the amount of $58,800 to provide support and professional development for school improvement, for school improvement best practices. Strategic alignment, student achievement, funding source, redesign. Mr. Rico, Ms. Warren, Dr. Bethley, and Mrs. Lopez. Professional Service Contract, Studyville. Consideration of a request for the approval of a professional service contract between the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board and Studyville in the amount of $75,000 to provide tutoring services. Strategic alignment, student achievement, funding source, ESA. Mrs. Williams. Professional Service Contract, Baton Rouge Youth Coalition. Consideration of a request for the approval of a professional service contract between the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board and Baton Rouge Youth Coalition, BRIC, in the amount of $794,519.31 for students to participate in college and career readiness programs. Strategic alignment, student achievement, funding source, General Fund. Mrs. Williams. Professional Service Contract, Everyday Labs. Consideration of a request for the approval of a professional service contract between the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board and Everyday Labs in the amount of $221,558.97 to support student attendance. Strategic alignment, exemplary, exemplary, excuse me, exemplary customer service, funding source, ESA III. Incentives, Ms. Smith, Ms. Dupree, Dr. Bethley, and Mrs. Lopez. Professional Service Contract, Amplify. Consideration of a request for the approval of a professional service contract between the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board and Amplify in the amount of $237,248 to support K4 literacy. Assessment and Intervention. Strategic alignment, academic achievement, funding source, Federal Grants. Ms. Okowski. Professional Service Contract, Renaissance Learning. Consideration of a request for the approval of a professional service contract between the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board and Renaissance Learning in the amount of $165,158.7 to support data analytical, analytics, performance, and early warning systems. Strategic alignment, academic achievement, funding source, ESA. Mrs. Okowski and EEF and Mrs. Okowski. Professional Service Contract, Dreambox Learning. Consideration of a request for the approval of a professional service contract between the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board and Dreambox Learning in the amount of $399,984.93. Strategic alignment, student achievement, funding source, General Fund. Ms. Okowski.
Madam President, may I have a point of order?
Yes.
Before, before you call for any objections, I would just like to note that it's eight thirty-nine. Mr. Goday has already indicated that he would vote against extending the time till, to nine thirty. Quite a number of these items were originally scheduled to be heard in July, at the July meeting, and, and had to be pushed to August. Quite a few of these contracts involve services going to be provided directly to students, and if we don't vote on them tonight, and approve them tonight, then those services will be delayed in getting to our students. So I'm going to very respectfully request to my colleagues that we defer to the, to our collective wisdom at the Committee of the Whole, where all of these, I think all of these items passed unanimously last time. I know not all of us could be here last time, but I would, I would respectfully request that we not object to any of these items tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. So before we proceed forward, thank you for sharing your thoughts, Mr. Martin. Are there any items? Thank you so much, Mr. Lewis, for reading the consent agenda for us. Are there any items that anyone would like to pull at this time?
Item 10, and I understand the time constraints, but item 10.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I'm gonna pull that one.
Okay, Mr. Lewis is pulling item 10. Mr. Goday? Okay. Look, I thought you were trying to give me your attention. I got you. Okay, so thank you. All right, seeing that that is the only item that is being pulled, we will now receive a motion on the rest of the consent agenda.
I move.
Okay, it has been moved by Mr. Martin, seconded by Mr. Goday. Comments from the board at this time, Mr. Lewis? That was to pull the item? Okay. All right, thank you. Any further comments from the board at this time? All right, seeing none, we will now have comments from the public. Ms. Matthews.
My comment is on H2, on the pay for the college students. Originally, it was supposed to be for paras that are also working towards becoming educators. I just want to let you know that we have 116 para vacancies currently, and that two that I know quit yesterday that are not included in that number. Twelve paras in July quit. We had in July, five teachers quit to become paras. That's interesting. Four paras became teachers in July, and two clerks became teachers in July. Now, if you are a para, your pay for working extended day is $9.70 until you hit forty hours for the week, and then you get time and a half, which then it becomes $14.55, while college students who do not work for this district will be getting $20 an hour. We need to honor the people who already work in this district rather than people we are trying to bring in, because we currently have children whose IEPs are not, we are not in compliance for. And I know at least one of those mothers is the epitome of play with me and find out, and she's standing in front of you. Okay? So we need to make sure that we have paras, that we keep the paras that we do have, because they're leaving in droves.
Thank you, Ms. Matthews.
They're leaving in droves. I have fourteen seconds. It's green.
Okay, so are we about to have a whole conversation about that?
Well, I'm running out of time, and it's green.
Come on, finish your statement.
Okay, I need to go back now. But it's, nah, I messed up. Okay. We need to hang on to who we have and stop running them off. One that quit from one school quit because of the pay. They only make $14 an hour. That is the starting pay. And I understand that this item isn't on the pay of our paras, but we're having them work after school because they can't afford to live off of what they pay, but then we're gonna bring in some college kids that don't even work for us and pay them $20 an hour.
Thank you, Ms. Matthews. Okay, Dr. Fanning.
My concern with number two, in addition to all those points so elegantly made by the preceding speaker, is that you are allowing wealthy schools to pay an hourly wage that poor schools can't afford, and that's outrageous. There is too much flexibility built into the proposal. My objection to the last item, Dreambox Learning, is not so much the waste of the $400,000, it's the waste of the students' time by forcing them to use software that is probably great for some students and apparently not great for others, and we should allow their teachers to have some discretion about how the kids spend their time. And finally, with all these general fund items, I was hoping for a memo that would address which line and page number all those general fund expenditures are coming from. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further public comment at this time, we will now return to comments from the board. Seeing none, we will entertain a vote, and is the computer system now working? Thank you.
Please vote. The motion carries.
Thank you. It is now eight forty-six, and Mr. Shamlin, if you will share with us, I believe that we have another item that we have to cover tonight.
Yes, Ms. Lopez has indicated that the CNP budget revision item must be considered tonight for legal, legal deadline reasons.
Okay, so is it the pleasure of the board that we take I1 and then return to G1, which is deputy superintendent contract?
And Madam President, I will, I will vote to let the meeting go on, because I know we have to get to the deputy superintendent contract.
Okay.
But let's continue to move this at a pace.
Thank you. Okay, so if that is the case, then what we will do then is, the original agreement was that we would cover G1, the deputy superintendent contract, after the consent agenda, and then immediately following that we would, then we can go into I1. Okay? All right, well, let us continue. G1 unfinished business. Number one, deputy superintendent.
Ms. Powell, let me make a suggestion.
Please.
Consider the other item, considering there's only three minutes before we have to vote to extend. You can probably get the other item done quickly.
Okay.
And then vote to extend.
So let's do I1. Thank you. Budget revision, child nutrition. Consideration of the request for the approval of the revised 2023, 2024, and proposed 2024, 2025 child nutrition, child nutrition program budgets for compliance with Louisiana Revised Statute 391310 and Louisiana Revised Statute 391311. Is there a motion?
No. Should move.
It has been moved by Mr. Martin and seconded by Mr. Ballou. Comments from the board at this time. Seeing none, we will turn to comments from the public. Dr. Fanning.
I understand you're gonna vote for this, because there's a deadline, but I was disappointed that the backup wasn't complete until less than 24 hours before the meeting. And there was a suggestion in some of the narrative that there was a transfer from the general fund. That also affects the general fund budget. And so perhaps in the superintendent's report in an upcoming meeting, he can provide some information as to how the, the general fund is impacted by whatever you do tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further comments from the public, we will now return to comments from the board. Seeing none, we will entertain a vote.
Please vote. The motion carries.
Thank you. Item G1, deputy superintendent contract. Discussion or consideration for the approval.
I'm sorry, President Powell, you should probably consider to vote to extend the meeting at this point, as it's eight fifty.
Is there a motion? It's been moved, okay, Mr. Martin, go ahead.
I'll move to extend the meeting till nine thirty.
Okay, it has been moved by Mr. Martin that we extend our meeting until nine thirty. Is there a second? It has been seconded by Mr. Lewis. Comments from the board at this time. Seeing none, comments from the public. Dr. Fanning.
It's time to abolish the stupid policies. You don't have to go through this exercise twice a month. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further comments from the public, we will now return to comments from the board. We will now entertain a vote.
Please vote. The motion carries.
Thank you. Item G1, deputy superintendent contract. Discussion, consideration for the approval of a deputy superintendent employment contract. Is there a motion?
Should move.
It has been moved by Mr. Martin. Is there a second? It has been seconded by Ms. Stewart. Comments from the board at this time. Mr. Martin.
I'll be brief. We obviously are all aware of everything that we collectively as a community went through. President Powell, Lewis, and I worked very closely with Superintendent Cole and our council to negotiate what we thought was an appropriate contract for this position. I think it's time that the district recognized the need for, for a position like this, and also gives the, it gives a recognition to the devoted public service that Mr. Smith himself has offered. However, I don't consider this a reward for good behavior or anything like that. I believe this is an appropriate salary for the appropriate level of duties that Mr. Smith is going to be expected to perform. I've talked extensively with Superintendent Cole as to how he intends to make use of this position. With Mr. Smith filling it, he's, he's gonna be very, very busy, doing very important things to move our district forward. I know, I think, I think Superintendent Cole expects him to basically visit three or four schools every single day across our district to make sure that things are going the way they're supposed to and to provide his particular expertise to assist the principals and the teachers in those schools with educating on our kids. So I think we're gonna see a lot of value in return for the contract that we've negotiated, and I strongly encourage my colleagues to support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ballou.
Thank you, Madam President. My main concern about the contract is, is that the gap between the rest of the superintendent's executive staff and this position, and whether, I guess I'd like to hear from him as far as any concerns about the, that gap, and whether we're setting a precedent for the remainder of the staff. I want to make sure we get, you know, it's not so much the, the amount we're paying, but I want to make sure at, at all staff levels that we've got, you know, we're paying what we need to, to get the best people in here. I know we've had a deputy superintendent in the past, I guess probably goes back to maybe 2017, and the pay gap between that, that position and the rest of the executive staff wasn't as great. Can you address that concern, Superintendent?
Sure. First, let me say, I think all of our employees deserve a considerable raise for the work they do every day, from the deputy superintendent all the way down to clerks. I shouldn't say all the way down, all of our employees who do various different services to help our students be successful. I'll start there. As it relates to the other members of the leadership team, I do think they deserve a raise as well. However, I, I think this is a start, because I think ultimately when we talk about talent, and we talk about recruiting talent and then retaining talent, we have a lot of good people here. And if we don't start to think about compensation packages for the talent we have in our district, we're gonna start to lose people. I think this tonight will signify that we are moving in a direction of recognizing the talent we have, making an attempt to compensate them well. And then as we think more thoroughly about a compensation study, we figure a start point and then begin to figure out how do we compensate all of the good people we have working in our district at a rate that is reasonable based on the regional average. And so I support the, the salary tonight, and then would like to work with the board, and then some external. and then some external stakeholders to think about how do we do this in a way as we seek to retain good people and then recruit other people from other industries to perhaps provide their expertise for our district to elevate their salaries in a way that people will say EBR is open for business and ready to have the highest talent level possible to do this work to help our students.
Well, thank you for that. And, and you mentioned regional average. I don't, have we looked at, is that a study that's going to be done in the future? Did we look at regional?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, we did. Well, region as far as within the state as well, and so of course, majority of those salaries were in that, that 130 or so range for the deputy superintendent, but it was not a deputy superintendent that was appointed by a school board, but was more of appointed by the superintendent of those areas.
But still, well, still the same position, though. Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further comments from the board at this time, we will now entertain comments from the public. The first comes from Ms. McMillan, who does not desire to speak. She says, "Give the man the money. His loyalty to this district warranted." Thank you. All right, the next would be Ms. Lee, Ms. Veretta Lee, if she's still here. Okay. All right, the next would be Dr. Fanning, and then Ms. Matthews.
$235,000 is more than most superintendents in this state make, and that's kind of where I stopped reading. So I hope further down in the contracts, the duties that go with that compensation are pretty explicitly stated, along with the board's responsibility to exercise some oversight since he is a board appointee. But my main concern is that you approved a budget with a one-page organizational chart that is now with this position and with the creation of a separate chief academic officer that you didn't approve filling. I fear we're going down the same path that Dr. Narcisse went, where he terribly extraordinarily expanded central office to the detriment of the people in the classroom, and I would hope that practice ends immediately and that you soon have an adjusted general fund budget that shows what the organizational chart is and how folks are getting paid. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Matthews. Okay, thank you. Seeing no further comments, okay? All right, seeing no further comments from the public at this time, we will now return to comments from the board. Mr. Martin.
Yeah, briefly, I do agree with Dr. Fanning that we need to properly keep track of the org chart at the, at the, at the top level. The district and I am quite confident that Superintendent Cole is going to share that with us in appropriate time in the near future. I, I do think it's also important that, to understand that while we, we almost certainly do need to reduce the overall central office budget, that does not necessarily mean that we don't need to have people at an appropriate level making appropriate salaries in order to provide the leadership. We, we put in a lot of responsibilities on Superintendent Cole. He cannot do it by himself. We have a great central office staff and the chiefs and whatnot, but, but, but he, we need appropriate levels of, of help, and I think this is a first, a good first step in that direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Russ.
Thank you. I just want to state that I'll be abstaining from this item. I did not agree with this appointment. I continue to have the same views in that I have a lot of respect for Mr. Smith and certainly would love to see him continue to do the work that he does in this district, but at the pleasure of the superintendent, whom we have empowered and held, should hold accountable to do this job. And I will again stress that making a political appointment at this level is highly problematic for our ability to hold our superintendent accountable. It gave him no ability to structure his central office in a manner that he saw fit. He now has to do so around a choice that his board has made for him, along with, you know, the, the money that we're about to spend has to come out of his budget for his central office that we are making for him. This is hugely problematic, and that's all I can say. Thanks.
Thank you. Seeing no further comment from the board at this time, we will now entertain a vote.
Please vote.
Thank you. All right, Alphabet J, organizational items, Mr.
We've got to go back to consent.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, thank you. Pulled item, item number 10, professional services contract, English learners engage, consideration of a request for the approval of a professional services contract between East Baton Rouge Pairs School Board and English learners engage in the amount of $58,800 to provide support and professional development on school improvement, best practices, strategic alignment, student achievement, funding source redesign. Is there a motion? It has been moved by Mr. Gode and seconded by Mr. Lewis. Comments from the board.
You know, I've had about two weeks to look at this, and in this contract, there's four schools, correct? We have, in EBR, we have 37 schools that are CIR. We have eight schools that are UIR. Why don't we have schools? Well, let me, let me, let me back up because I don't want to get in a hurry. Belair High School is a D. It's urgent intervention required. They're not in this grant. I'm, I'm sorry, they're not in this contract. Broadmoor Senior High School, English learners, urban, urgent intervention required. They're not one of the four. IDEA, idea, um, bridge, type 1 charter, but they're our kids. They're our English learners. Urgent intervention required. They're not mentioned. Jefferson Terrace, English learners, urgent intervention required. Nowhere are they mentioned in the grant. La Belle Air Elementary, English learners, urgent intervention required. Now, they're supposed to be on track to exit in '24. Where is the data that shows they're going to exit in '24? Maybe they will, maybe they won't. Then you drop down McKinley Senior High School, English learners, urgent intervention required. Park Forest Middle, and this, and, and, and my colleague asked this question in the meeting I was not here, and she started me on this track. Park Forest has been a grossly underperforming school for six-plus years, and I promise you, their English learner population is growing like wildfire, like every school in this They're not mentioned. Southeast Middle, English learners, urgent intervention required. Now, all of our schools have, there's comprehensive intervention, but it says needed. That means we need to start taking a look at it, like basics. Comprehensive, comprehensive intervention required. Then you've got urgent intervention. But where it says needed and required is two different things.
Coach, my apologies.
My time is up?
Yes, sir.
Well, okay. Well, let me just, can I just cut to the chase?
Yes, sir, please.
Okay, let me cut to the chase. For $20,000, this grant says, may request up to $20,000 for each CIR, UIR academic school to support EL professional learning. We can use this money for CIR and UIR. And also, at the bottom of this grant, we got two schools in this, I keep saying grant, I'm sorry. We got two schools in this contract, Magnolia Woods and River Oaks Elementary. They're in here for students with disabilities. They don't even have English learners down here. It's student with disabilities. I'm just, you know, I'm, I'm just confused why we've got so many schools that comprehensive intervention is required, urgent intervention is required, and there's, and there's only four.
Yes, Dr. Bethley, thank you.
I'm sorry, Dr. Bethley, I didn't see you standing there. I would have acknowledged you five minutes ago.
That's okay. So I understand your concern, Ms. Stewart, and I reached out to you to explain this. Okay, when we applied for this in November, these four elementary schools were selected, and you're right, like, we could apply for so much money, but the state only awarded us this amount. And this vendor is, had a hand in selecting these schools as well because the state only gave us this amount. So it could be $20,000 per school, but they didn't give us $20,000 per schools. These schools have a high number of identified EL students. So the executive director and his team, along with the vendor, selected these schools. But this is not the only funding for students identified as EL. We have other funding sources for students that are identified as with EL.
Is it, are those funders in redesign? In the redesign monies, can we use those?
No, sir, because redesign is specific. It tells us what vendor we can use, and they give us, they award us how much money to use. But we have other funding, general fund and other federal funds, that support our schools that have a high number of ELs.
Well, thank you, and I'm just going to, I'm going to pivot to you, Superintendent Cole. I just, I think this needs to be looked at a little bit more. I really do, because we've, I mean, it's, what's, what's our population of EL learners in our district right now?
15%.
15%. And it's growing like wildfire.
It is.
I had a conversation, and I know, Mike, this is anecdotal, but I had a conversation with a social worker today who talked about the kids at one, I'm not going to name the school, they're not even, they got so many EL students, they had one individual to try to help them get these kids going in the right direction on the first day of school. We need to, hey, again, I'll go back and say something I said earlier this evening. Until we start addressing these subgroups in our schools and stop depending on a handful of schools to have positive SPS scores, to prop us up, to make us look like we're really doing a great job, until we start drilling down, getting down to the nitty-gritty of what's going to move this district, that's what we need to do. I'm, I'm going to defer to Superintendent Cole.
And, and you talked about professional development early, so that's what this vendor does, offers professional development for the teachers and administrators. And we do have other funding sources that provide the same professional development for the teachers and administrators at our other schools.
Okay, so when are we going to start looking at Broadmoor Elementary? Belair?
We are, Mr. Rico is working on providing professional development for the teachers and administrators.
McKinley Senior High School, are all, all these people?
Yes, sir. Yes, they have a high number of identified EL students.
Okay, considering, I, I believe, Mr. Lewis, you probably used your time, and Ms. Stewart, then.
You know what? I've been waiting two weeks to have this conversation, and if I use somebody else's time, I'm so sorry.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Ms. Stewart?
I reserve my time for Coach if he needed to say something else.
Thank you.
No, I'm, I'm fine. I just think we need to, we need to address it, and I think, and I'll pivot back to some of, something someone said earlier tonight, Mr. Cole, I'm sorry, Superintendent Cole needs to take a close look at everything we're doing with these contracts, whether it's for $100 million or $1. He needs to understand and know what we're doing. Not that he doesn't, I'm just saying he's new.
Board member Lewis, and I had a conversation with Ms. Bethley about this particular item, and when she explained to me it was grant dollars that had been applied for, I said, well, any opportunity we have for our ELL learners to apply for grant dollars, which are additional funds to support them, we have to take advantage of doing it. And so when she explained that these were grant dollars that were applied for by the staff and the vendor for those particular schools, I talked to her about seeking other grant opportunities for all of the schools that have ELL learners. So, and today, I want to thank you, Ms. Bethley and the team, for seeking out those dollars and with acts that you do exactly as board member Lewis said, continue to seek other funding to assist our ELL learners and all of our students who struggle with learning in any particular way. So thank you for seeking out the grant dollars because we know there's a ton of additional funds so we don't have to pull from the general fund, and we don't have to pull from dollars that we have here. We can seek other funds to assist with those learners. So thank you for doing that, and I hear you loud and clear, and I continue to evaluate, look at, and then seek other funding opportunities for those students as well. And I just want to say, I think when we have those opportunities to seek those funds, we have to take advantage of them, whether it be for a, a small group of schools and all of our schools, we have to continue to do it. And then when we receive the funding, use the money, use the data to show the success we've had. And so I hope that as we come back, you will come back and give us a report, and the ED for those four schools will show how this money was used, how the teachers were developed, and how they implemented the work in the classroom to help the students.
Yes, sir, and we're going to start the process for the 20, uh, wait, this is '24, for the '25, '26 school year in November, so I will invite Ms. Stewart and Mr. Lewis to attend those meetings.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Beth.
Thank you. Mr. Martin.
Thank you. I, I think the, this has been an interesting discussion. I, I think to the point Dr. Bethley made, you know, that, well, to back up, we, we always are, we have very often, Superintendent Cole, been in positions like, hey, we got some grant money, let's, let's spend it. We obviously don't want to leave money on the table, and we can't make the grant or give us all the money that we would like to provide, all the services and all the schools that we can. However, Dr. Bethley makes the point that, that we can, we can choose to provide additional funding that we have, and I think one of the strategic weaknesses that the district has had is that we, 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 we see a grant, we say, hey, let's go for it, but we're not taking the opportunity to examine, is this a strategic need that we really need, that we need to expand and perhaps devote some of our own resources into the same contract and, and, and use our own money to expand the reach of it? I'm not saying that's what we need to do for this in particular, but I'm saying that's the thought process we need to go through, and, and we need to make sure we're very strategic that when we apply for grants, we're looking at that totality, not just, oh, hey, there's a grant, let's go grab it. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further comment from the board, we will now turn to comments from the public. Ms. Matthews.
I almost kind of heard that there might be a possible of a friendly or a substitute motion there, Patrick, maybe? Okay, so the program is absolutely great, first of all, but, you know, Caesar said that it was to get their feet in the door with the grants, and that if we could find a way, we could get the funding for the other schools. Belair is 25% EL. 25. A quarter of our population at Belair is EL. If 70,000, I think this is what you said earlier, Gode, I'm not 100% sure, so please correct me, I know you will, but if 70% is less than a, if $70,000 is less than a percent of our budget, and we can, .1%, okay, there we go, then we can, ah, that stupid timer, okay, and we can spend hundreds of thousands of dollars when we get a grant on something like Dream Box? We can spend $20,000 on our EL students who can move stuff up and move our numbers up, and they need the help.
Thank you, Ms. Matthews.
You're welcome, but spend that. You're welcome, but spend that $20,000 on these other schools. Thank you.
Mr. Stewart.
Again, this goes back to my, one of my number-one premises of, and I know that it won't happen this year, we need to stop this waste of $35 million in this ridiculous busing paradigm that exists.
Mr. Stewart, please stay on topic.
Ma'am, I am staying on topic. We are talking about not having enough money to finance.
We're talking about EL students and transportation.
And we're talking about not having enough money to finance enough EL instructors, because there's not enough money or money allocated toward that. And if we would spend the taxpayers' money more wisely, we would make this system more concise, we would stop losing parents and losing students to all of these charter schools, who these people think that are much better than EBR, which I beg to differ, but they're looking at how you structure this system so inefficiently that they leave. So we need to go back to neighborhood schools and divert that $35 million into things, much more important things.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Seeing no further public comment, we will now return to comments from the board. Mr. Gode.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Cole, I'm going to ask that we work together cooperatively to come up with a much better format to present these things, because this is exactly what we just talked about, which kids orchestra and everything else. We look at this one contract for one little piece of EL, and we jump to the conclusion that that's all the money we're spending on EL. I don't know exactly what money we're spending on EL, but what the backup for this should have is, here's our EL thing, here's our EL population, here's the money we're spending, here's how we're doing it, here's the schools that are doing that, and here's how this contract fits into that, as opposed to just, here's the contract. Because we're not getting any context in this. And I think context would lend a lot to all of this discussion, because right now, quite honestly, we're talking about a lot of stuff we don't know anything about, because we don't have the information for this. As far as I know, we may be spending totally adequate amounts on EL. We haven't talked about Highland Elementary. Highland Elementary is pushing 50% EL. But I go over there, and I got three or four EL teachers over there. So when you start getting anecdotal and you start getting a contract in isolation, it's very difficult for us to be able to make a good thing. So we need much more context when these contracts come up. Not only, you know, who is the organization doing it, what's been their history, how does this fit into our overall strategy, how does this fit into all of these things, as opposed to just a contract. And I would also say it'd be really helpful if, for something like this, you have, I can't remember his name right now, Mr. Rico. Mr. Rico should be presenting this. Because I know Ms. Bethley, nothing against Ms. Bethley, she's watching the dollars and cent, Mr. Rico is doing the strategic work. And so we should be having Mr. Rico present this, but it should be presented in a context of, here's the big picture, here's how this piece fits into that picture. Because what's happening is, we get the piece, and everyone's drawing their picture from that one piece. So I'm going to vote for this, because I trust Mr. Rico more than anything else, and I know he's doing a good job. And from my school that has the high EL population, they're seeing progress with it, even though they're not in this grant, but I know they're getting a lot of other money to it. So that's my recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further board comment at this time, we will now entertain a vote.
Please vote.
Thank you. Before we get into Alphabet J, just a friendly reminder to my colleagues, don't forget to start reading chapters 1 through 4. Will be due before, by the time we get into the September meeting, full meeting of the board. Thank you. Mr. Gode, Alphabet J, organizational items.
Committee of the whole to be held on September 6, 2024, at 5:00 p.m. in the Central Office Boardroom. The regular meeting to be held September 19, 2024, at 5:00 p.m. in the Central Office Boardroom.
We need to include the special.
September 5, I believe.
Yes, September 5.
I'm sorry, I didn't have my glasses on. September 5.
No, we need to include the special meeting prior to the committee.
And we will have a special meeting to be held on September 5, prior to the Committee of the Whole meeting on September 5.
Thank you. And would you like to finalize our final motion?
I move we adjourn.
Thank you. You all have a safe evening.